I have a call this special council meeting to order. If you could please stand for the pledge and invocation. Councilman Randolph, you do the pledge for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Smith, you'll do the invocation, please.
We always come to you and ask that we can be better than we are. And this is a pretty good time for us to ask you that now. We have issues before us that many people feel very emotionally about. Please help us to remember that these are our neighbors and counsel with us. And help us, as Jesus would want us to do, to treat them with patience and kindness, and leave no bitterness behind. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Madam Clerk, you call the roll, please.
Mr. Dean, Mr. Fitzgerald, Ms. Kazabon, Mr. Lorena, Mr. Taladano, Ms. Tanner, Mr. Davis, Mr. Canulett, Mr. Smith, Ms. O'Brien, Mr. Lachlan, Mr. Bender, Mr. Arie, and Mr. Randolph.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. Public comment, a three-minute time limit established for each member of the public wishing to speak for and against an item on the agenda. To ensure that all speakers are heard, please hold cheers and applause. Anyone who wishes to place a comment on the record but does not wish to speak at the podium may fill out a speaker card and check the box indicating that they do not wish to speak. I will speak a little bit about this in a second. We have two items. The first item is an ordinance for adoption, ordinance calendar number 7383AA, ordinance to appoint outside counsel to represent St. Tammany Parish Government in the matter of Military Revitalization Company, LLC versus St. Tammany Parish Government. I get a...
I'm next.
Motion by Ms. Tanner.
Second.
Second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion?
The motion is unanimous with three F's.
All right. Next, resolution number one, resolution CS number C-6822, resolution to the St. Tammany Parish Library Board of Control in support of Act 336, or 436, and to urge the adoption of policies and procedures to comply with the act and for related matters. So, we have come a public comment here in a minute. I'm going to read from a little bit of a letter that the library board wrote us based on the subject matter tonight's resolution. So, reading certain selections of it, in 2022, the library served over 85,000 cardholders through 541,000 library visits, more than 120,000 visits than the year before. We have 44,000 partings in attendance for just over 2,600 classes and events. Library Board's policy has been that the parents and guardians are the decision-makers for what their children read, see, and hear. We have several longstanding policies that protect children and the rights of the parents. These include children under 18 may only obtain a library card and use the computer with the written permission of their parent or guardian. Children under the age of 10 must be accompanied by a parent or guardian in the branches and when using public computers. All public computers have filters in accordance with the Children's Internet Protection Act. Parents have the ability to see their children's library account and know what their child is checking out. Over the past year and a half, the library has enacted further policies and procedures to give parents even more tools to use in the selection of library materials. These include an updated card system that specifies a level of access the minor child will have for the collection, a resolution by the board directing that graphic art novels with sexual content be placed behind the circulation desk, only available to adult or unrestricted juvenile card that a parent selects, an updated challenge materials process where the board makes decisions on all challenged items, an open public meeting allowing for greater transparency, a resolution requiring the library staff to temporarily house all challenged items behind the circulation desk until they can be reviewed. As you know, the Louisiana Legislature passed Act 436, which was then signed into law by the governor on June 8, 2023. This act provides for several measures regarding library policies. These measures include that the library shall adopt policies to limit access of minors to sexually explicit material. Policies must be adopted by January 1, 2024, and implemented by June 1, 2024. These policies must include language added to our collection development policy that specifies community standards be applied to the materials required by the library, and language that adopts the act's definition of sexual conduct, a library card system that allows parents to select whether a minor can check out sexually explicit material as defined by the act. The same card system should allow parents an option to select whether the minor can check out, download digital content, a procedure that allows a library partner to request a reconsideration of whether these materials should be included in a collection accessible to minors. These measures can be amendments to existing policy. The good news is that the St. Tammany Parish Library is already in compliance with much of what the act requires. As mentioned previously, the library has enacted a card system that allows parents to choose their minor's level of access to the collection. Our card system, which we developed last fall, rolled out in November, and implemented fully on January 1, 2023, was the model upon which the card system described in Act 436 was based on. We will have some tweaks to the system to include the option for parents to turn off digital access and then have the library board of control officially adopt the card system with these changes. Our robust reconsideration process or statement of concern policy exceeds the requirements of Act 436. The library administration are actively working with the district attorney's office to draft the necessary changes to existing collection policy. We anticipate addressing all necessary policy and procedural changes at a regular library board meeting in September and October this year, which will have the library in compliance with Act 436 well before the January 1, 2024 deadline. So, that's available on the St. Tammany Parish's library website, sort of in response to this meeting. So, we're going to open up. If council members want to talk first or we want to have our public comment, we have approximately 40 comments, so 40 times three is quite a lot. One thing, if you hear somebody say exactly what you wanted to say, you don't get a prize for coming up to the podium. You can certainly say that I agree with what that person says. Also, we have a resolution. I expect that anybody that's coming up here has read it. All your comments need to be confined to what this resolution says. We're not going to talk about anything extraneous, and that's in the parish charter that you all passed for how I'm supposed to govern these meetings. And we're also, all your comments need to be addressed toward this body, not toward any members of the audience, and no members of the audience are going to comment or talk while somebody else is up here at the podium. And if people don't want to follow those simple rules, there's some nice people in black uniforms in the back, and they will ask you to leave. So, let's not have any of that. Let's have a good, respectful meeting where we can talk about these issues and move forward. So, with that said, our first speaker is Levi Gregory. We're letting him go first because he's 13, so he can get back to school. Get to school early tomorrow, I guess.
Hi, my name is Levi Sales Gregory, and I am 13 years old. My mom loves to read and has done her best to pass along that love to me, my sister, and I. We read a chapter book every week or two right now. We access the libraries regularly. There are various meetings, including Hoopla. Sorry. But when she started saying what kind of books were being allowed for my sister and I to check out and read at home, aren't reading well, we were at the library. She was disgusted, and after reading something for myself, so am I. Maybe my name sounds familiar to you. My father was Officer Jason Seals of the Slidell Police Department, who was guilt on the line of duty on November 17, 2018, when I was only eight years old. I wanted my dad, I watched my dad protect the citizens of Slidell since the day I was born. I know that if he was still here, he would be fighting what is going on in our libraries to protect his children's innocence. Since he isn't here, and I am the oldest son right now, it is my turn to step up and be the protector as my dad was. Tonight, I'm going to be reading you a portion of the book Flamer. This is a book that was challenged and put back on the shelves and labeled as appropriate for kids. Some of it deals with topics too old for me, so my mom refused to let me read at all. This is just a part of it. I'm not going to say the full words that are in this book, but know the full words are there. All right, that's enough. I'm tired of all this faggoty BS. Take out that effing ponytail. Come here, no stop. F off. Hold still, god dang it. Get off. Get the F off of me, mother effer. You effing faggot. You're the faggot, you're the fludging, packing, fairy cocksucker, queer, pansy faggot. Did Aiden do that? Holy S-H-I-T. Who knew he had it in him? I'm going to F you up. If a movie had these words in it, as such as the book does, the movie would be rated R, and the children under 18 would only be allowed into theaters with a parent. Why is that a child can pull out, pull a book off the shelves and read it or check it out, check out a book without parents? The library board isn't protecting kids, and Hollywood is doing a better job. I will not stand back and do nothing like y'all are doing, but I hope that these changes, this changes after tonight in seeing a 13-year-old child doing more than you are in protecting other kids like me.
I will point out that that particular book is in the adult section of the library and would require parental request or an 18-year-old to check it out. All right, next card, Deborah McKean.
Hi, I'm Deborah McKean. I'm a 73-year-old grandmother. I have a beautiful 19-year-old granddaughter in LSU. She's seeking a profession as a physician. Her mom and dad have raised her in a loving Christian environment. One day, I may be blessed to have a great grandchild, and I pray to live that long to see my first grandchild. As a member of Generations Church, I work in the nursery. I see these beautiful children, these babies grow each year. Our church prays constantly for our children. The fact that someone in this world would abuse and harm one of these precious gifts from God is incomprehensible. And the reason why I'm saying this is because the climate of our government is not a great picture. They have young people being changed due to societal pressures. There's many different names, different agendas, all protected under the government, and many more corrupt nature in sex trafficking child, of children worldwide. Pedophilia is a major issue in all aspects of child abuse. Pedophilia is a sexual perversion in which children are preferred sexual objects, specifically a psychiatric disorder in which an adult has a sexual fantasy or engages in sexual acts with a pre-bes, pre-besent child. There's abuse books, pedophiles share grooming manuals and learn to prey on children. And every day, the Coalition Rescue monitors 30 to 50 million records linked to child sexual abuse and reports its findings to law enforcement. The child, I mean, the amount of child sexual abuse material referred to by professionals as CSAM floating around cyberspace is frightening. But what is in these files and how do the predators viewing, trading this material learn how to find and hurt our children? Well, you know, they have ways and they have different, you know, different cloud services that are working to stop this, but it's not against the law. But they do have child coalition that are working with pedophiles and child abusers. Now, the actual matching process uses what's known as hash, a digital fingerprint. This is derived from the key element of the image and is deliberately fuzzy so that it will continue to work when images are resized, cropped, and otherwise processed. This means that there will be sometimes a false positive, but an innocent image whose hash happens to tie close enough to a match on this CSAM.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Carla Martinez or Caitlin Martinez?
Hey, everyone. I just wanted to come up here because I am an educator. I teach both ESL and I work in our school system. I have worked with a number of queer children, of LGBTQ children, with children of color, with trans children. I also hear slurs said every day at school. I do think if your child is old enough to hear it in the seventh grade, they probably are mature enough to read it in a book. I also believe that reading is a pathway to empathy, to kindness, and to mutual understanding. I just want to talk about some of the books that have been challenged, many of which I have read, and these have been pulled from the shelves and denied to our readers. I believe that these books have benefited me and that they could benefit the people in this room as well. The first one is The Bluest Eye by Toni Morrison. This book is taught in classrooms as young as ninth grade throughout the country. It deals with poverty, it deals with racial discrimination, and unfortunately, these are realities of our world and our community. It's also excellently written, and it is considered a canonical American text, and the author went on to win the Nobel Peace Prize in, or sorry, the Nobel Prize in Literature in 1993. So, it seems a little absurd to suggest banning her work. Red, White, and Royal Blue by Casey McQuiston, who is a non-binary Louisianian, they do exist, is the story of the president's son falling in love with the prince of England, and they navigate life as public LGBTQ figures. As somebody who may not be a prince but did have to navigate coming out myself, specifically in this community, which can be a little bit hostile sometimes, this story really resonated with me, and I want people to be able to access it. Eleanor and Park by Rainbow Roel is a book I read in high school and I loved. It details a young couple navigating an interracial relationship. Regardless of what you guys might hope for, teenagers are navigating relationships and sexuality, and it's important that they learn how to do so in a healthy and safe way. Cemetery Boys by Aidan Thomas talks about junior high students as they struggle with transness and Latinidad, but the story doesn't only talk about those things, so our trans students get to see themselves represented at the center of a story that is not only about their gender identity. The Hate U Give by Angie Thomas discusses a high school student navigating the loss of a loved one after an encounter with police while simultaneously maintaining a connection with her uncle, who himself is a police officer. This powerful story talks about these issues with nuance and compassion. About half of the books that I name talk about queerness, but all of them center non-white protagonists. I think it's telling that the books that people are flagging feature Black, Latino, and Asian protagonists. Given that St. Tammany Parish is nearly 15% Black and over 6% Latino, I think that pulling these books from the shelves disproportionately affects our kids of color, and it tells the world that St. Tammany Parish's ideal world is devoid of non-white voices. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Barbara Mamoulides. Maybe I misread the writing.
Okay, I get that. That's a hard one. I had to work on it myself. My name is Barbara Mamoulides, and so that is a hard one. I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. I can usually, but I didn't that time. I live in Mandeville. I'm a licensed professional counselor. I have over 30 years' experience with children, families, and teens, and I do not support this resolution. It's simply not necessary. With the changes that have been put in place, I don't think that continuing to try to micromanage the library is what is needed in our parish. Act 436 has already been passed and will be respected by this parish. Micromanaging the library system will take control away from the professionals who have been hired, and it will also undermine the board of control that you have put in place. The library board of control that was put in place by you was a great thing to do. You already have someone serving that role as oversight for the library. They're working efficiently and effectively with the library director and the librarians, and we're, I am supportive of letting the librarians continue to do their job. They are well aware of what is pornography. They are well aware of what is appropriate for age groups based on subject matter, vocabulary, and subject, subject matter and illustrations. They also know what the interests are of regular library patrons, and they are more aware than most of the rich diversity of this parish. So, allowing them to do the job that you have set up for them to do is the answer. It's not additional micromanagement of their jobs. As a parish council, you have done a great job trying to provide a library that is open for everyone. There is diversity in our parish, and we want to see and hear and recognize all of our parish members and not a chosen few. So, thank you for the work that you've done, and thank you for the work that you are allowing the professional librarians to do.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Rustemeyer. I live in Covington, Louisiana. I've been there for 20 some odd years, and I've used the library for over 20 years. I am against this, the resolution. I don't see a need for the resolution. I didn't really see a need for the legislation, and I've followed the legislation quite extensively all along. We have a library that is hugely popular with an award-winning director, amazing staff that has borne the brunt of a vicious political attack. Since 1950, they've served all of us with no issues. They're continuing to serve us even through all this, these attacks. I mean, I've read some of the emails and like that, and I would not deal with it, not dealing with it well, if they were directed at me and threatening me my job and like that. This is a changing community, and they're being proactive about adapting to these changes. Books don't groom people, of course. People groom people, usually adults in positions of power with children. So, the proposed resolution casts a shadow on our exemplary library system, award-winning director, the staff. It projects an image of a parish in favor of censorship and ignorant to the importance of a robust and relevant library system. Act 436 is vague, difficult to interpret and implement. Who decides community standards or accessible to minors? It puts the library staff in loco parentis, while parents should have the responsibility for their children in the library. No children has been harmed by material. I don't, I heard any report that people are getting harmed, like kids are getting harmed in the library. It's just not a thing. We're dampening reading in children. We're trying to remove books of certain people in the population. LBGTQ teens have been reported being deeply upset and depressed about these bans coupled with the legislation out of Baton Rouge last spring. Does our parish want to be known as the censorship capital of the country? Because that's what it's looking like right now. We have 11% of the, all book challenges recorded in 2022. How do we resolve titles that are requested by one patron, over 16 of them, that other people don't want in the library? How do you resolve that, that there's still 16 of those? So, I'm asking you, instead of passing this resolution, either don't pass it, or please consider this alternative one, which goes into Act 436, and the progress the library has already made on that and being proactive about it. Thank you very much.
Hello, Jonathan Varnado, resident of Madisonville. I just came here to hopefully just speak on behalf of common sense, reason, decency. I have an eight-year-old child who's dyslexic, okay? We go to visit, we visit the library on a regular basis. When it comes to checking out books, I have to be careful about the books he chooses because of his academic ability, right? I don't want him to choose, you know, a book that's too difficult for him because that can be discouraging. I don't want to choose, you know, a book that's not going to challenge him, right? I have to choose wisely, right? But there's not a big difference between that and choosing books based on their maturity level, okay? As a parent, that's what I do, right? I make that decision as best as I can, right? It's not a perfect science. But I try to help my child decide to read, you know, a book that is on his level. There's no difference between that and maturity level, okay? Because unlike the library in comparison to, you know, the internet, right? Books don't literally fly off the shelves, right? We're not assaulted by, you know, books above his maturity level when we walk in. In fact, we have to seek out those books, right? We choose those books that we want to read. You know, I look through those as his parent. I fulfill my parental role, okay? That's the other, that's one point. The other point is context, okay? We're going to hear passages taken out of context, right? And that is divorced from its whole, and that's one of the big differences when you compare, you know, works of art, literature, from things like pornography, okay? Because, you know, people don't watch pornography for the stories, right? That's not why they're consuming it, okay? But there's, it's funny, because there is a, you know, there's a website that takes out pictures of films, of, you know, say, rated R films, PG-13 films, and, you know, puts them on their site, scantily clad, you know, individuals, individuals in a nude. They turn that work, even if it's a, you know, a scene from, say, Schindler's List, for example, right? Well, they take those scenes out, compile them, and by essence, they create pornography now. And that's sort of what the, you know, the accountability group is doing here, right? They're taking things out of context and twisting them and putting them, you know, and amassing them to create something that's not what they were intended to do, right? They're whole works of art. It'd be like if I took a picture of you, of just your nose, right? It's your nose, it's a part of you, but that's not the whole you, right? I'm taking it out of context. So, that's what these folks are doing. They're sort of like the Mr. Skin of literature, right? They're taking things and compiling it and creating, you know, something that, that's not what the author's intended. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm for the resolution. Pornography is ugly in any community, but when I found it lurking in the shelves of our library system, I was shocked and incredulous. I was very naive a year ago about this issue and thought that going to the library board of control, they would be horrified and shocked that these books were on our library shelves. But I was met with stone-faced indifference because these were actually the ones buying the books and placing them there. The next step was to turn to you, the parish council, thinking surely they would want to do something about this when made aware of what was in the library system. Not only were you indifferent, you were resistant and hostile to being told about this issue. Many of you exercised the run, duck, and hide skills politicians use. Nine months ago, Mrs. Donna Benoit and I came before this parish council wanting to ask you to address this issue. We were told to shut up, had our microphones cut, and a court officer was ordered to escort us out of here. Now, nine months later, when you no longer can duck the issue of the filth that's in the library and available to the youngest children in our community, you've suddenly decided to call this meeting to discuss it. It is because it has become an issue affecting your reelection that in the month and a half that now is ahead, your political careers are being challenged? Mr. Smith, you're taking credit for organizing this meeting, but it is very hypocritical gesture on your part after you have ignored this issue for the last nine months or more and have not supported anything to deal with the library board that controlled by Mrs. LaRoca, Rebecca Taylor, and the rest of the members. You have not supported the bills that were going to rectify this out-of-control purchasing and taking steps to place these books away from our children. In February, at that parish council meeting, when I tried to bring this issue before this council, you were one of the first ones to get up and walk out along with Mr. Arie, and I have the picture to prove it. The parish council collectively is guilty of dereliction of duty and betrayal to this community for not reining in the actions of Mrs. LaRoca, Rebecca Taylor, and the rest of the board infecting our library system with this filth and breaking the laws of Louisiana on distribution of pornography. To this day, you have allowed her to restore all To this day, you have allowed her to restore all the books that we have challenged as pornography, and she continues with the immunity to do this thing. I say this warning to you.
Thank you, ma'am.
You'd have to publicly denounce this.
Ma'am, your time is up. Turn it off. Leila, please, please, we've got a long meeting ahead of us. Leila Heckmatz-Dast? I'm tearing it up tonight, names.
I'm Leila Heckmadoust. I grew up in St. Tammany and have been raising my kids here for over twenty years. I support the libraries and the Library Board and the excellent jobs that they do. This resolution is unnecessary because our library system is already in compliance with the new state law. St. Tammany is not only the home of white, straight, standard Christians, we are a diverse parish, and we should celebrate that, not attempt to destroy it. Thank you.
My name's Doyle Spell. I live in Covington. I came in opposition to the resolution this evening. Thirty-five years ago, I took an oath to defend and promote the Constitution of the United States of America, and that's why I'm against this. You all are treading very closely to First Amendment rights. I don't believe that the founding fathers contemplated that the St. Tammany Parish Council was going to be able to dictate what books are made publicly available to the public. And I believe that this, not only does this resolution lack teeth, it lacks purpose. So I would suggest that perhaps you might want to withdraw it. Thank you.
Ronald Gallatin? All right. Marty Bankston?
I'm Marty Bankston from Mannville. I've been there about forty-two years, and it's my first time meeting the council, and it's really my honor. Thank you. It's well-known that hot-button controversial issues in social and political life often provide opportunities for the unscrupulous to exploit these frictions for their own self-serving interests. Some, to be sure, believing at the bottom of their hearts and minds that they are truly helped by involving themselves, and what their input can often be an asset to the community. Senator Cloud, author of a Louisiana Senate Bill 70, which later became law as Act 436, belongs in the latter category, but was simply a little short-sighted in her efforts to write legislation she believed would be meaningful and effective just because it sounded right or it was the right thing to do. We now see feel-good legislation is contagious, evident in proposed parish council resolution being considered this evening, as someone has submitted a rehash of Act 436 and has gotten a sponsor with Mr. Smith. Where at times copycat legislation is so broad to be meaningless, it can also bear the fruit of intolerance, aggression, and be decidedly divisive, such as what I get reading between the lines of this resolution, which, in so many words, puts the members of the Library Board of Control and the library administration and staff on notice. Even though the act gives boards of control until January 1st, 2024, to be in compliance, the word immediately is used twice in this resolution, referring to procedures and policies that are already in place in our system. This is accusatory, combative, and mean-spirited language that has no place when referring to the Library Board and administration, who have bent over backwards trying to appease the aggrieved complainants. In my opinion, the governing body of parish affairs should be taking a balanced and unbiased stance on issues involving their fellow parish employees and especially the selfless volunteers on the Board of Control. And this is not it. Please vote no.
We need to keep the applause down. This isn't the LSU-Florida State game. That's Sunday. You can applause then, but let's keep this moving along. Also, and please, as the last gentleman did, please confine your comments to the resolution that's before us, so we can move this meeting along. And Mr. Gatlin?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for the opportunity to be heard. Roland Gallatin from Covington. I'm really just at a loss as to why we are even here having a meeting. A lot of people in the audience apparently don't know, and I'm wondering how many people on the council don't know, that 436 became state law on the 1st of August this month. It's a state law like speeding, okay? I didn't have a choice whether or not to speed or not speed when I have the choice to do that, but the authority for the law to be enforced does not come from this council or it doesn't come from the public, accepting the fact that it's, you know, that they like it. It doesn't matter whether the Board of Control accepts 436 or not. Do you understand that, Mr. Smith? Because you called this meeting and you wrote the resolution. One can only conclude that you don't understand how laws operate, do you? I'm asking.
Sir, please confine your comments to me.
Okay. Mr. Arie, could you ask Mr. Smith if he understands how laws?
All right, sir. Thank you. That's all.
No, I'm not going, I'm not trying to be smart. You told me to confine my comments to you, and so I'm doing it, okay?
Comments, not questions. Come on.
So no questions are allowed?
Correct.
This meeting accomplishes nothing, okay? As long as I'm making statements and not asking questions? It accomplishes absolutely nothing, except maybe it's some sort of attempt at political theater for Mr. Smith's reelection. I don't know. But it accomplishes absolutely nothing. It's a state law. You don't get to decide whether you like it or not. The governor signed it. The legislature passed it, okay? A lot of my, what I wanted to say was questions. I mean, if this, you know, what is the council, what is this council going to do if the library doesn't abide by 436? Can anybody answer that? Is anybody willing to? Would anyone like to ask me a question from the council? I'm not trying to be smart, okay? Honestly. I would ask that the resolution of the St. Tammany Republican Parish Executive Committee be read or be put into the record here, because this is a resolution that actually has some action, okay? Otherwise, since you're not going to take any of my questions, I can only say this.
Thank you, sir.
This is a pointless meeting. The law has been enacted. It doesn't require.
Thank you, sir. Time's up. Terrace Moore?
I want to keep this short as possible. I do believe the resolution is a waste of time and unnecessary. We don't need to micromanage the library. The monies we spent on all this investigation into these books could have supported a food bank for a year. It's annual budget for that. Also, too, everybody's so worried about pedophiles. Definitely, everybody is. I have a map from the watchdog group. It shows there's 200 mapped offenders, sex offenders, and 73 unmapped sex offenders just within a six-mile radius of my home. St. Tammany Parish has 13,700 registered sex offenders in the parish. I doubt they are getting as much scrutiny as a book in a library. Thank you.
Andy Benson, number six log, Kevin Lane, Pearl River, Louisiana. I've been a resident here for, golly, forty-three years. I'm going to keep it short, I think.
Thank you.
You know, before saying anything further about this unnecessary and unenforceable resolution, let's note, due to the passage and signing into law on August 1st, 2023 of Louisiana Act 436, as has been already said, which demands that all library control boards in Louisiana enact certain policies to protect minors from sexually explicit, including pornographic materials, with this to take effect without exception before January 1st, 2024. I think that point's already been made, and we all understand it. Now, while I may support the words of our council's resolution, we also need to acknowledge the often hollow and misleading intent of some political resolutions. Despite this council's two years of awareness, we've seen no commitment and no visible actions to protect kids in libraries. So what's new? Well, surprise, an election is on the way. This resolution is just latching on to the tail of a noble cause long ignored, normal children unprotected, anxious, good parents shrugged, the good fight not fought, and an outcome no longer related to the council achieving the outcome promoted by this, its own resolution. So this is just a verbal nothing burger. Well, thankfully, the state came along and did our council's job for it, and for this, we must salute the state. So often, political resolutions are just transparent promotional stunts. They're just the age-old tactic of running out the clock and trying to look good when there's an upcoming big vote. This virtue-signaling resolution, too late to the game of the matter, is only that and no more. It just clarifies the meaning of big hat, no cattle. Yes, I support the words of this hollow, unenforceable resolution. I say just obey state law, enforce it. It's coming whether you like it or not. And vote up and down. It's really kind of meaningless at this point, because you're going to be overseen by the state, and so is this board. So vote up or down. Adjourn the meeting, whatever you want to do, but thank you.
Joan Simon?
Joan Simon of Covington, almost forty-year resident of the parish. Thank you for letting me speak. We're all here to address an issue that, in my view, cannot and should not be resolved with a resolution presently being considered. Personally, I think we would be better served with a resolution in support of the library rather than a law with questionable First Amendment issues. However, Act 436 is the law we have, and we must deal with it. It now appears that the person behind all the controversy is not even here to defend her position. Ms. Phillips, leader of a small, or maybe not so small, I don't know, they say they're 99% of the parish, but they're a very vocal group of citizens who've insisted our library system and its professional, caring, hard-working staff are targeting children, foisting pornography on them. There is no pornography in the library. Even the true author of Act 436, who Senator Cloud said was Jeff Landry, said that at an ARPEC meeting last year. He knows better. He's a lawyer. I must ask why our council feels the need to reconsider or to consider, excuse me, a resolution on this issue when we already have a law in place, a law that our St. Tammany Parish Library is basically already adhering to. Going down this slippery slope is going down the road of government censorship that's never a good thing historically and one that always ends badly. St. Tammany has basically become the book banning capital of the nation. I'm not proud of that, with the majority of the statements of concern submitted over the last year coming from one person who never shows up to defend her concerns and, again, could not even bother to show up tonight because she's not getting her way, apparently. We're not, the Library Board of Control is not doing enough in her view. Ms. Phillips' cut-and-paste comments in her statements are basically all the same, legally specious, and oftentimes not even germane to the book she is concerned about. She has threatened Ms. LaRocca, all obtained through personal records requests, and while she and her followers keep saying they are not against book banning, those requests have revealed the ultimate goal is to defund the library system in retaliation, perhaps, for the library not banning the books she did not obviously bother to read. This is outrageous. We have a wonderful library that is functioning beautifully and up till recently never had a concern, and they're not grooming children. They're serving a wide and diverse array of our citizenry. We have a lot of problems in St. Tammany. The library is most definitely not one of them. Let parents choose for their children, continue to allow our library to serve us with excellence, and please get back to the work you all were elected to do. Thank you for attempting to address some or to appease someone who clearly cannot be appeased. Thank you very much.
Annie Spell?
Can I catch you all copies of this? Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry. She told me. Thanks, Steve.
Hi. I'm Annie Spell, the real one. I graduated from SSA a long time ago, and I live in Covington. I am an attorney. I thought I'd come here tonight to talk about the First Amendment and how wonderful books are, but thankfully, I got to listen to some people speaking before me, and I realized that the problem is not what I thought it was. It sounds like to me we have some Republicans who are upset with some other Republicans, and that's the political problem we're fighting here. So I think everybody who's associated with the library, who loves the library, who loves our librarians, who thinks libraries are great places for people to come and not be attacked, because we have wonderful people who work there. We all, you know, we all love our library. So of course, I don't think the resolution is necessary. I didn't think the one that they were mentioning earlier was necessary. I don't think this is necessary. I appreciate you trying to do things to help us get along, but honestly, if somebody was against a book that they thought was disgusting or had the magic ability to hurt somebody else, shouldn't they have complained about that book when it first came to the library? There are books that you read, you had a privilege of reading, that you had access to, and I lived at that Covington library, but they have taken those books out. And now, when I go there, the books, because I like to look at the books, I like my spaces, and I'm not hanging out in the kid's section, I'm hanging out in my section, and now there are no books that I love, and the books, they're trying to do dummy books, which I appreciate because it makes me feel good to know, and I know other books are important to you, too, and you like seeing them, and there's no reason why these books should be taken out. And there's no reason why we should be here tonight and listen to people abuse other people because of some political argument. When those books were written, they came before a review board, before it even got to the library. So that's when all the complaining about the book should have been done. Not now, they're there. There are books that have won Nobel prizes. Our librarians have doctorates in library science. Let's trust them. That's all we want, and let's keep the politics, obviously, out of the library, and thank you.
Once again, let's keep this to the resolution that's before the council.
My name is Chad Cochran. I was born in this parish, and the library system here had a great effect on my life. I'm the pastor of a church here now, Generations Church, and I've spoken to some of you guys who are council members from that side of the parish, left messages for others of you who I couldn't get on the phone, and I welcome this resolution. I'm certainly for. And I welcome this resolution, I'm certainly for it, and I appreciate the steps that our library has taken since we have begun talking to them very directly about our problems with the books that are in the library. I won't go into my history of how the library affected me, 'cause we're on the time clock here, but let me just say, it was through books in the library that my life was definitely changed and went into a direction where I ended up serving as a missionary in another part of the world for almost twenty years. And I regularly go to the library with my children there as well, and so I have warm memories of the library, the things that I learned there, I've checked up many, many books through the years, and so was horrified to find that there were books on the shelf that contained images of pedophilia. Never would imagine that here in St. Tammany Parish, there would be books on the library shelf that any child could walk in and access. It may be in the adult section, but a child still can walk into the library and pull it off the shelf and access images that can change the course of their direction. Now thankfully, through our attempts, talks of the Library Board, some of these books have been removed, but it is up to you, the parish council, to not only enact this resolution, but even further resolutions to make sure our library board does not obfuscate their duty to make sure they are protecting our children. And so it is up to you, because right now with our library board, most of the books that have been listed, given them as challenged books, they've returned to the shelves. And basically, we have a case of foxes guarding the hen house, and it's your job as our elected representatives to make sure they're doing their duty and making sure they are following this Act four thirty-six, and if not, have the courage to remove them. Thank you.
Bonnie Schmidt?
Can I have these passed out, please? Good evening. I am Bonnie Schmidt with the League of Women Voters of St. Tammany and the State of Louisiana, and I would like to read a letter to you, which you are also getting a copy. The League of Women Voters of Louisiana and St. Tammany is a nonpartisan volunteer, political advocacy organization committed to keeping our citizens informed. We do not support political candidates, but we do take policy positions regarding good government and individual rights. We are devoted to voting rights for all. We wish to notify you of our support for the St. Tammany Parish Library System. Our state convention, held in March of this year, approved the initiation of a study regarding book banning and/or censorship. We appreciate our library's selection of books that reflect the range of community members such as women, blacks, Native Americans, LGBTQ+ community, and many more, thereby acknowledging that libraries are for everybody. We are committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion in the use of taxpayer money to purchase books for all members of our community as an expression of individual rights and a commitment to the right to know. We appreciate the move by our library system issuing library cards long before Act four thirty-six came into being, acknowledging that the right of parents to decide what their children should read and the responsibility of parents to monitor what their children read while not trampling on the rights of other parents. We wholeheartedly support the renewal of millages to continue to support the outstanding library system of St. Tammany Parish. We urge you to oppose the efforts here and in our state legislature to enact government control of the right to read. This goes against our values of freedom and democracy. I have a couple of seconds left, so I just wanna comment that every time I go into the library to pick up a book, I ask them to roll out the cart of the challenged books and I choose two or three of the books. I've probably read about twenty now, and I cannot for the life of me figure out why they are objectionable, except for the fact that everyone I've read has a trans person, a gay person. We cannot turn back the acceptance of homosexuality.
Fran Smith?
Hi, I'm Fran Smith. The resolution is urging the LBOC to obey the law, Act four thirty-six. It should say, "St. Tammany Parish Council demand you obey Act four thirty-six." We need the parish council to see that the LBOC enacts a law that was passed. The parish council is supposed to preserve the general welfare, safety, health, peace, and good order of the parish and the management of parish affairs. The libraries are a part of this parish. The resolution has no teeth. Mike Smith did write the resolution, but he did not write SB seven and Act four thirty-six. It was written by Senator Cloud. Mike Smith had nothing to do with the passage of this act. From the beginning, a pit bull, five grandmothers, and with help of other grandparents, very concerned citizens, some politicians, one committed lawyer, and ministers prayed about this. We did everything possible we could do to pass this legislation through. For what? To protect the most innocent people of the parish, to protect our children and our young teens, something that most of the parish council have refused to do because they are afraid of the opposition. Without support from our parish council, the LBOC will continue to buy, place pornography on the shelves for our children to read. Now is the time, parish council, to step up to the plate and choose who you will support. The children and young teens of your own districts and the community and the majority who voted for you? Or will you do nothing again and just stick with the opposition that seems no harm in our children reading these books with nudity, sex, and obscene language? How would you feel if I gave one of your kids a book on how I have sex? I'm a heterosexual, would you like me to do that? I think not. I don't think you would like that very much at all. But yet, these kids are seeing this in these books. That young man just got through giving you a heartrending, crying about this. And you know what? You also need to look to see what your other parish council members are doing. My daughter lives in Cross Gates, she has to drink the nasty water from Mike Smith.
Ma'am, we have to keep this on this resolution, please.
Oh, I am gonna keep it. This means something. He is only up here now doing this resolution so he can get re-elected again. And I'm sorry, I am not gonna let my kids drink that water, Mike Smith. Thank you.
Okay. Jamie Segura?
Good evening, I'm Jamie Segura. I have lived in Covington, Madisonville, for a little over thirty years. I have two posters, "Trust Parents," they should be making decisions on our library books for their children, "Care for All Kids," we need books in the library that represent all kids, and sometimes that means gay, lesbian, trans kids as well. I'm here tonight to urge the St. Tammany Parish Council to defeat this resolution, which is supposedly to support a state law placing restrictions on our local library system and the books that are on the shelves, because a handful of religious zealots deem some of these books vile, okay? As we already know, more than a hundred of the book challenges come from one person, Connie Phillips. If you wanna ask her, she was just outside assaulting a member of the St. Tammany Parish Library Alliance, and it was broken up by the police officers outside. Act forty thirty, four thirty-six is redundant in St. Tammany Parish. The library system here has already taken widespread appropriate actions. Many are right there in the act. It's election season and the irony of this effort is not lost on most of us, the majority, if not all, of the current parish council members are members of the Republican Party's. Some seeking reelection, some not. Most of you folks were right here in this room, just a couple of weeks ago, culling the support of the Republican Parish Executive Committee. How ironic that here we are again in the sacred halls of parish government. I say ironic because if you say you want to protect children of St. Tammany, but yet you allow an individual charged with child cruelty and child abuse to sit on the RPEC. In fact, John Raymond has been endorsed by you.
Ma'am, let's keep this on this resolution here.
Well, this is it. If it's about morality of the books in the library, you don't have very much room to talk. Trying to protect the children rings very hollow. You lack any moral authority when it comes to being the ones to protect our children. This resolution about Act four thirty-six is just a dog and pony show. As some of the members of the opposition, and dare I give them any credit, they hit the nail on the head. It's not needed, it's to cull favor with voters. Shame on you.
Just to have some order, since we're about halfway through the comment cards of people who do wanna speak, we will, I'm gonna read the comment cards for the people who don't wanna speak, so they're not all the way at the end. So we have Elizabeth Kogler, other, doesn't want the resolution to pass, I guess is the comment. McKay, or MK, against. John Miller, four. Matthew Arbo, A-R-B-O, against. Kenneth Reddick, four. Caroline Reddick, four. Somebody who didn't fill out the card but signed it, four, so I can't read your signature. Tina, a... Heather, I can't, you didn't, just your signature, you didn't send it, but you're four. Just one name, Dolores, not filled out, against. Mitch Whitaker, other, wants sexually explicit material to not be in children's hands. Susan... Susan, two fifteen, Leek Slidell, doesn't really address the ordinance as other or the resolution. Michael Van Vorthson, against. Donna McHill, other. Anita Gamble, against. Daniel Carter, four. J.K. Hall, against. Camille Thompson, other. Christine Lukenschnegel, against. I apologize if I butchered your name. Lydell O'Brien, or, yeah, Lydell O'Brien, four. Laura Denopoulos, against. She has two cards? Or is it a different? I'm sorry. Maybe two different people. I'm sorry, same person. All right. J.F. Rushton, against. Gay G. D'Avani, against. Stephanie Atkinson, against. If anybody wants to convert your card, I'll gradually do that, but, all right. Melissa Copeland?
Thank you for the opportunity. Listening to all the speakers so far, I believe I agree with pieces and parts of each of those who speak and have spoken. I have spoken previously. I am, was caught by surprise, sorry that my name was next. So I'm catching my breath right now. I am an advocate for children, certified in school counseling and for grades kindergarten through twelve, and I want us to remember, we do have a constitution that is created by our forefathers. And so for me, this cannot be about to ban, but for me, this is to remind us of our responsibility to protect the children and allow them to proceed through their natural and moral stages of development, from zero through eighteen. As an advocate again for children, trained to counsel and educate the children, to serve them and counsel all of these grades and ages, I hear their hearts. I have heard all gender and all gender preferences, and I am reminded that in the end, this is about love. Loving each other. As adults, we are to be reminded that it is our responsibility for these children to protect them and let them grow, give them that time that is needed to become adults. It is also my position, our position, to protect them from abuse, from abusers. And in our training that we receive, which hires a lot of people in this parish, I wanna read an excerpt about the definition of sexual abuse. "It is an involvement of a child in any sexual act," and it goes on to be quite explicit. The part that paused me and my training that I've done yearly and that is required, there is a statement for Louisiana sexual abuse definition that abusers, me, they might use bribes, physical force, threats, or make, or may take advantage of the child's lack of knowledge, lack of knowledge. And it is a criminal activity for them to engage in child pornography.
Ma'am, your time's up, please. We have...
Thank you.
Rachel Rhodes?
Good evening. My name is Rachel, and I've been a resident of Mandeville for twenty-three years. I'm an active patron of the library and a member of the Mandeville Book Club, and I'm against the resolution. Libraries are essential community hubs. They connect people to information and connect people to people. They provide after-school homework, help, games, book clubs, classes, and job and career advice. They offer computer classes that allow older adults to stay engaged in the digital world. They promote education, literacy, and learning. They're free and offer a variety of resources that aren't accessible to low-income families. St. Tammany Parish Libraries are public libraries, not private or religious. The definition of public, according to the dictionary, states that public means of or concerning the people as a whole. In the United States, there's an estimated twenty-three million, eight-hundred-ninety-six-thousand-eight-hundred LGBTQ people. LGBTQ people are part of our community. The public library should be a place for everyone's voice. The books that are being challenged are books related to the LGBTQ community and people of color. I've been reading the challenged books and I see the pattern. They are not pornographic or sexually explicit. The handful of people submitting complaints are cutting and pasting, providing wrong information and not reading the books in their entirety. If I copied and pasted from my own Bible, you would say that it's one of the most violent and sexual books on the planet. The attacks on books are based on gross conspiracy theories that are... The attacks on books are based on gross conspiracy theories that are running rampant on social media in our country. It threatens our democracy. No one should be trying to tell families what to read and what not to read. This is what the Taliban does. The library always, already has a multi-level card system for checking out material for minors. I've been attending the library board meetings and speaking on the challenged books. I'm dumbfounded of what's going on. The constant threats being hurled at the library board members and librarians are unfounded. It's just nuts. Neil deGrasse Tyson, the renowned American astrophysicist, recently stated that the United States is de-evolving. In other words, Americans are becoming dumber and dumber. We used to lead the world in science and technology. He showed a map comparing the U.S. where it was 20 years ago and comparing to where we are now, and it's disturbing. The rest of the world has surpassed us. Restricting books, new knowledge, and language will only make the situation worse. Do we want to go back to the Dark Ages? Withholding literature that contains a variety of perspectives from the public is abusive and harmful to the nurturing of critical thinking skills.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Ruth Terry Sipes.
I'm Ruth Terry, whoa, Ruth Terry Sipes, I live in Abita Springs. Although I find it bewildering Act 436 came into being, I have to realize perhaps that not all libraries have the same level of public trust or engagement as ours. The first reading of the act was really scary. However, after parsing it, I realized our library staff and Board of Control are actually way out ahead on most provisions. I guess that is what happens when you are known as the epicenter of book challenges in public libraries in the U.S. and have smart, attentive-to-the-community leadership. You don't have the Louisiana Library Director of the Year recipient as your director for nothing. Great leadership skills, a cool head, and surrounded by more than competent and helpful staff, the library director, along with the BOC, have successfully steered our library through choppy waters. So Mr. Airy went through the kinds of policies that are already in effect prior to even the very first meeting that was held a year and a half ago. And he also went through the things that had been done prior to Act 436 even coming on the horizon. But I want to say a thing about these level card types and democracy. Starting in January, all juvenile cards had to be renewed by a parent or guardian and choices made as to access. The statistics are interesting. Cards that were renewed reflected fewer restrictions. I submit, these numbers are reflective of longstanding patrons having a higher level of comfort with the library collection and its access policies. In other words, familiarity creates trust. On the other hand, the new cardholders do reflect more conservative-leaning choices parents are making on behalf of their kids. A clear indication, the library is doing its job protecting children according to their parents' wishes. It reflects a library's safety mechanism placed squarely where it belongs, in the hands of parents. Am I comfortable with all the decisions made by the BOC? Nope. But I live in a multicultural, multiracial, gender-fluid world, as do each of you. Our libraries are here for all interests, for all political and/or religious persuasions, for all cognitive and age levels. They are for us to access as each of us sees fit. Thank you.
Thank you. Candace Mallard.
Okay, now I got it. Okay. Four people confirm I'm Candace Mallard, so I must have, I probably. Could you, would you press those out of your mind? Thank you, that is so nice of you.
Miss Candace, you can start.
Okay, my name is Candace Mallard, and because Act 436 addresses checking out books, but not the availability of books sitting in the library, I propose the following addition to amend the council resolution. In addition, all materials for which complaints have been filed since June 2022 will be shelved behind the library desk for checkout by adults only. Complaints about such materials will be posted on the library website without identifying the complaint, and responses shall specifically address each item of the complaint and will also be posted on the website by the library board. The parish council, number two, the parish council mandates that books for which complaints have been filed remain restricted to adults until the council addresses these books or appoints a library board whose views align with the community. Number three, parish council places St. Tammany Library on the agenda quarterly, so the public has an opportunity to express concerns, opinion, and gratitude for your actions. We are here to address contentious and emotional issues about the library. These same issues are being battled throughout the country. Our library problem was exposed by a concerned parent when she requested that manipulative, grooming, pornographic, sexually explicit, and arousing material be stored behind the library desk, only to be selected by an adult or parent. Who would ever imagine that in our library, they would display a book which sketches depicting a 40-year-old man having multiple sexual encounters with a 10-year-old boy? Or a book that entices a kindergartner to think about other genders in the children's section of the library? In the last year, over 100 such books have been identified in our library. The conversation is not about book burning, book banning, or even censorship. It's about letting parents choose which books their children are exposed to. This is nothing new, but rather an extension of the existing library requirement of parental approval for minors to access the computer library. This is parental choice. Parents want to make these decisions. They don't want elected bodies to make these decisions, and they don't want non-elected people to make these decisions. Children are a treasure from the Lord and should not be exposed to material they are not mature enough to, enough to handle, whether it is sexual, violent, or manipulative. Our children's innocence is not being protected in the St. Tammany Library. Let me be clear, this is, there is no neutral ground here. This is a spiritual issue, not a political one. The Bible says there are two realms, one of God and one of evil. You need to choose which you're going to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on. Sarah Cook.
My name is Sarah Cook. I'm in Covington. The Louisiana, I'm against the resolution. Louisiana Citizens Against Censorship has opposed Act 436 since it was introduced in the legislature as Bill 7. Then, as now, we argue that this legislation was a solution in search of a problem. Many of the provisions of the bill were already in place at libraries across the state, and library boards in every parish have the power to enact them without the need for legislation. Louisiana libraries has always been some of the safest spaces for our children. We've been horrified to watch as half-truths and outright lies were told under oath in testimony about the prevalence of adult materials in the children's section of Louisiana libraries. Both the Attorney General and the Senator sponsoring the legislation wildly misrepresented library collection development policies, maligned, hard-working library staff, and engendered unnecessary fear in parents about threats that simply do not exist. Under their unrelenting political attacks, the First Amendment rights of authors, as well as the rights of individual parents, to decide for themselves what is best for their families, was lost. Louisiana, a state perpetually at the bottom of educational rankings, is poorer for it. Louisiana Citizens Against Censorship will continue to support our libraries and fight against efforts to restrict the rights of its citizens. Though this act does not ban library materials explicitly, make no mistake, the state legislature has taken the first steps in the erosion of the right to read freely, a direct attack on democracy. The loss of freedoms is a slippery slope, and what today starts as protecting innocence will tomorrow become protecting the regime. We cannot and will not allow that to happen. Thank you.
Carol Ostrander.
My name is Carol Ostrander. I live in Madisonville, been there for about 20 years. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to come forward and listen to everybody's side on this. I want to just share that, you know, we're not here to bash alternative lifestyles, to tell people what to do. I have a personal belief, as we all do, and I want to cap on to what Candace Mallard just said. And one of the things that came to my attention not too long ago by one of my youngest daughters was that, first of all, we're here to protect our kids. They don't understand. They are not mature enough to do that. And she shared with me that the cortex of the frontal lobe of the brain, which controls reasoning and logic, is really not fully developed until the early 20s. These books, one of which I saw, that explicitly had pictures of a man, young boy, whatever, who was aroused, and another picture of a girl who was going to show them how to have oral sex. My question is, I listened to some of the people, and especially this young man, was that if these things are being monitored, how did he get a hold of that book? And are our librarians really doing their job? I don't know. I've learned a lot, just like everybody else has in the last couple of weeks, and what I'm hearing is horrid. It's disgusting. I can't imagine reading one of those books with that language to anybody, much less talking that way in front of anybody, even those of us that lose our temper or forget sometimes and say things maybe that we shouldn't, in front of our kids. We don't, we always have regret. It's natural for a parent to want to protect their children, and that's what we're trying to do. If you want pornography, there's an adult bookstore down in Mandeville. I called Barnes &amp; Noble, they have an LGBTQ section in the bookstore, and Lord knows what you can find online. But give these kids a chance. I'm against access to any of it. It doesn't belong in our libraries. That is a wholesome, safe place. And when these books are open to young people who don't understand, they think it's okay because adults put that, put that book there. Well, then it must be okay. It's not okay. We're all hearing and seeing a lot of what's going on with trafficking, the border, where there's rapes being going on, because these kids were never taught. If somebody, anybody, would have told me as a young teenager that what I have is holy and wholesome, and what God thought of me, I never would have gotten pregnant at 16 years of age, only to be forced to give my baby up. It's precious, and our children are precious. And I'm sorry, I'm just against all of these, this type of material in a library that should shelter our families and our children.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
David Ziegler.
Just want to thank you for hearing us out. It's taken quite a while for us to be able to just bring this subject before you, and we thank you for hearing us out. And we're going to ask you to enact this, or trust in that you're going to do it. But the lady that just said that she'd like to have our library safe, we'd like to continue to see that happen. But they're not safe until these books are removed and put in another area and restricted. And I'm hoping that that's what, this is all going to end up, because we're not asking for much. We're not asking for much. We're asking that this, just one thing, take place for the safety of our children, that they don't go in looking around, finding things that they can pick up and read, and then it damages them. So I'm for the resolution, but I'm asking for some more beef behind the resolution. And that's it. Thank you.
Blake Adair.
I live in Covington. Last time I was in this room, a woman stood here and compared me to the Taliban because of a misguided, delirious perception that because I'm against these books, I'm evil and want to kill gay people. I find this ironic and quite frankly comical, considering I spent my young adult life fighting that exact organization exactly because they throw homosexual people from high places, mutilate female genitals, and rape children. I'm a man who's been shot at, blown up, and scrubbed my brother's blood from under my fingernails, all in the name of defending people just like her. And yet, I'm accused of being the monsters I fought, who killed my brothers and tried to kill me. What that person said last week was a lie, just like everything else these people have said. I'm sick of the lies, and I get the feeling we all are. So please, allow me to call a spade a spade and allow a little honesty into the room. Let me be perfectly clear, we are not here to combat the LGBTQ community. We love you, just as God loves you. We're not here to argue your rights or try to revoke your privileges. We are here tonight, by the grace of God, to stand up to the corruption and sexual exploitation of our children. This has nothing to do with sexual orientations, and has everything to do with protecting the innocence of our children. It seems to me that people who advocate for this material have more in common with the Taliban than anyone. They're actively sexualizing children. They've sent many of us death threats, and they're cowards. Why else would they be targeting children with this agenda? I want you to look at this crowd and know that for every person you see, there are hundreds of us at home who can't be here tonight because they're busy caring for the children that these people intend to corrupt. As members of this council, you have a duty and responsibility to those people to hold the library board accountable and enforce Act 436. The books in this, the books in question are indeed pornographic, and they are grooming in nature. The sexualization of children and minors through any medium is pedophilia. It is a crime against humanity, not a right. The people in favor of these materials do not represent the LGBTQ community or diverse community. They are monsters who will shed false tears, twist God's word, and lie, all in order to get their way and sexually exploit our children. Hear me when I say, we do not want this pedophilia in our community, and we want to protect our children from this absurd ideology. It's your duty to help us. I just, I have a few minutes left. I just think it's funny that, I don't think you can take the term sucking dick out of context when it's in a children's book, and I also think it's funny that many of you aren't making eye contact with me. But thank you very much for your time. God bless you.
Come on. Cara Bovet, Bovet, looks like B-O-V-E-T.
It's Bovet.
Bovet.
Wow, I kind of wanted to go after that. So I don't agree with this resolution, and I don't sexually exploit my children. I have an eight-year-old, I have a 13-year-old, no, I don't, I have a 10-year-old and a 13-year-old. I have not been here nearly as long as any of you. I moved here two and a half years ago, and the first place we went was the library, and I got my kid a library card, my eight-year-old. And you know what it said? Don't go anywhere in the library without your kid. They're not allowed to be left alone when they're under nine. You know why? Because they aren't mature enough. You guys are right. They need to be monitored. And you know what? The library is not in loco parentis. I am their parent, and I know what they need. I am a parent, a taxpayer, I am a voter, and I'm an avid library user. I have gone to Mandeville, Causeway, Madisonville, Covington, and the Abita Springs branch to get materials, to go to the events that they have, wonderful Comic-Con event in Madisonville. I really don't think that these people use the library, because it seems like they don't know it is the safest place. There are so many. There are so many things in this world that make me worry for my kids. There was something that happened in Slidell recently at a high school that makes me scared for my kids. But you know what? The library is not one of those things. The more that they learn from the book, the more that they can know about how sex works, about how life works, the more that they can read about what is, no, no, like, they know their parts. I'm sorry, but they know their parts. They know how the world is. They know what to say no to. They know what's not acceptable. They learn where to have their boundaries. And I, I ju, um, becoming an adult does not happen overnight. You're right. It doesn't happen when you turn 18. It takes a long time. And the kids need to learn how to live in the world, because you can't put them out there as an innocent at 18. They need to know how to live when they get to be that age. My only other thought was that the cost of education is so much less than the cost of ignorance in this world. So I'm against the resolution. That's all I got.
Donna Benoy.
Hello? Hi, my name is Donna Benoy. I live in Covington. Um, I'm, let me put these on. Okay, I'm, I hear we're lucky to be able to have a, an opportunity to speak to this group of people. I guess you pay taxes, you elect these people, and nothing is done. I'd like to thank Arthur Lachlan for being at the forefront of what should be a bipartisan issue. All should want to protect children, protecting the innocence of children should not be a controversial, should not be controversial, but here we are. Likewise, our citizens should not have to anguish and beg for elected representatives to actually pay attention and represent us. Your silence makes you complicit. You are a accessory. You too will be replaced. Your job is to protect and take care of the general welfare of the parish, not to run, hide, ignore, deflect. We elected you to do this. It's a stewardship thing. We are working. We are taking care of our families. We are tired. The entire reason you exist is to represent the people in your district who can't know everything that's going on. You have not held up your oath of office. Shame on you. Tonight, six weeks before an election, you are here to embrace Act 436, which is already a law. All the emperor, 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 sorry, emperors have no clothes. You should have done this in October, it was in fact your job, not ours. Regular people have had to put their lives on hold to get this bill passed. This law exists for the entire state of Louisiana because of the lascivious actions of the St. Tammany Library Board of Control. Even the governor confirms this. You cannot expect the board, who causes the problems, to solve the problem. This is akin to criminals and the charge of police reform, being in charge. We will not accept it. Also, Martha Kasabon, who has defiantly continues to support Bill McHugh, who makes a mockery of our Boy Scout Troop Number 310, please drop out of the council race. If you don't, you will be rendered completely irrelevant. And I'll tell you who, this is a picture of, of what happened at the parish in Baton Rouge with Landry, Connie. And you know who I don't see here? None of you. None of y'all went to try to figure out how to solve this problem. Not one of you, not you, Mr. Smith. It's ridiculous. And that's who's missing. David Kugel was there.
Thank you, ma'am. Joanna Minor. Oh, Hannah Minor.
I'm Ms. Minor. This meeting was supposed to be about the children in our community and protecting them from pornography and explicitly filthy books depicting horrific sexual acts visually and describing them in detail on how to rape young boys and girls. I look at each and every one of you right now, and I ask you, do you want this for your children and your grandchildren and your great-grandchildren? I'm just asking. This resolution that supposedly Mike Smith put together does nothing. The law with Act 436 has already been passed. We have a very liberal, radical library board of control. That is why they need to be replaced. You have the authority to do that. On February 13th, 2023, in writing from the Louisiana Attorney General Jeff Landry, stating that the local governing authority may move its library board of control appointees at any time. On February 2nd, 2023, Mike Smith was the first person to get up and turn his back on my friend and colleague Diane Bruni, as she begged the council to allow her to speak on behalf of the children. Smith voted to appoint four of the five liberal board members, refused to endorse our HB25 bill. He's still posting on social media that we are book banners. We are only asking for a restricted area. We have contacted Smith and other council members for the last year, and nothing has been done. Right before elections, all of a sudden you're allowing us to speak. Seems your political career is more important than protecting the innocence of our children, Mike Smith. And if the little children were not already sufficiently confused, please quit messing with my mic. As to their sexual identities, they could now be brought to the public library, where a man wearing lipstick, false eyelashes, mascara, high heels, a wig, and a dress formed to simulate a woman's anatomy would read to them their favorite children's storybooks. In an ancient Hittite prayer, Ishtar is described as possessing the power to make young women dress as men on their right side, make young men dress as women on their left side. So the spirit of Ishtar is now again made young women dress as men and young men dress as women and both dress as both. And as neither, a strange spirit is now leading the culture in which is now seem to take great delight, when adults seem to take great delight in encouraging children to take on the dress and attributes of the opposite gender. Silence in the face of evil is evil itself.
David Kugel.
Good evening. As an attorney and father, I have been involved in the library issue since last October. Prior to the enactment of Act 436, an introduction passage of SB7, we began working with the Attorney General's office when he spoke before our presentation at last November's Library Forum. We provided him with examples of materials which were referenced in drafting SB7, and we traveled to Baton Rouge, where some of us testified for SB7, now Act 4036. Yet despite my extensive familiarity with the law, I have absolutely no idea as to the purpose of the resolution before you. It would seem that the entire point of this resolution is to endorse a law that has been in effect for months. Unlike the Livingston Parish Council, this council did not endorse the bill during the legislative process when it mattered. The same can be said of the companion bill, HB25, which I drafted along with the Attorney General's office, which would have provided this council with the oversight authority similar to what Jefferson Parish has, that they claim they desperately need. Despite the fact that St. Tammany and Tangierboho Republican Parties endorsed the bill, as well, as well as the Livingston Parish Council, this council also did not support that legislation. Considering this resolution has absolutely no legal effect, it is hard to see it as anything other than what others have claimed it is, political posturing and political theater. What is the justification of the taxpayer use of time and money being wasted on this resolution tonight, just six weeks before an election? How is the public supposed to feel confident that this issue is being addressed when the council simply proposes a resolution urging the library board of control to obey a state law? What's next? Are you going to ask the library board to obey the Louisiana, Louisiana Constitution? Act 436 does in fact discuss the library board of control, which is where many believe the real problems lie. After I worked with a state representative to request an opinion from the Attorney General's office to give you the clear legal basis for removing rogue board of control members, you did not use that legal opinion like other parishes chose to do, but instead relied on the conflicted opinion of your attorney, who also represents the very library board members you sought to remove. Surely you understand how hard it is for the public to have faith in this process. We are happy that Act 436 is law. We believe it's the first step in protecting children from sexually explicit materials in our library system. But we should be honest about this meeting here tonight. The only reason it is occurring is, and the only reason that for this non-binding resolution that does absolutely nothing to solve this crisis is to help save a politician's career. This same politician, my councilman, recently accused concerned parents who are simply trying to protect children of wanting to ban books. We deserve better. And one thing I want to note as well, I was informed that the live feed was cut when that young boy was reading earlier. So is, why are we doing censorship? I don't understand why that was cut. Thank you.
Roxanne, Roxanne Newman.
Good evening. My name is Roxanne Newman. I live in Mandeville. Unbelievably, I do agree that this ordinance is useless and pointless, but for the opposite reasons of many of the people who've come to speak. Putting books behind the counter is censorship. And people have spoken about community standards and what their beliefs are, and I'm here to remind you that we are a diverse community, and not everybody in this community is Christian. I'm Jewish. I'm a member of the North Shore Jewish Congregation here in Mandeville. And as a member of that congregation, I sit on the Jewish Community Relations Council, which is part of the Jewish Federation of Greater New Orleans. And what you're receiving now is a resolution by that organization against book bans, which I would like to read into the record. The American Library Association reported 1,269 attempts to censor library books and resources in 2022, the highest number of attempted book bans since the ALA began compiling data about censorship in libraries more than 20 years ago. Jewish reasoning for the opposing, for opposing state and local book bans is rooted in a number of core values and beliefs that are central to Jewish tradition and culture. Some of these reasons include: respect for knowledge and learning. Judaism places a high value on knowledge and learning. Jewish tradition emphasizes the importance of studying and questioning, and recognizes the power of education to transform individuals and society. Book bans represent a threat to this value by limiting access to information and ideas. Commitment to freedom of expression. Judaism has a long tradition of valuing freedom of expression and resisting censorship. Jewish history is full of examples of Jews who spoke out against oppression and challenged the status quo. Book bans represent a form of censorship that runs counter to Jewish values of free speech and expression. Resistance to oppression. Jewish history is also marked by periods of oppression and persecution. Throughout these periods, Jews have resisted efforts to silence them and have worked to preserve their culture and identity. Book bans can be seen as part of a larger pattern of oppression and as a threat to Jewish culture and identity. Embrace, embracing diversity and pluralism. Jewish tradition recognizes the value of diversity and pluralism. I'm going to run out of time, but I did provide a copy to all of you, and I asked that you read it, and I would like this to be made part of the record, and just remember that not everybody in this community is Christian. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen Wiley.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen from Mandeville. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. For all those who keep using the word ban, this is not a ban. A ban is when you remove a book completely and you are not able to buy it anymore, use it anymore. So that's not what this is. It could be a form of censorship, but we are supposed to use discretion. So if you want to use that as another way, we could. Also, I wanted to say that I'm for this, this, this law that's been put into place, and that there is a legal precedent. There's already been in 2003, a Supreme Court ruling. It was the American Library Association, which our library is also part of, that the United States took to court, and the United States won. And I hope that we do again, because again, we are one nation under God, not that it has to be just Christians, but Christian values and morality. And that court case is very interesting, by the way, Rehnquist, if you go back and read a lot of what he's said, you'll see the precedence and the obligations of our government, and especially our libraries being an extension of that government and our tax dollars, that government has a compelling interest in preventing and dissemination of obscenity, child pornography, and/or the in the case of minors, and also material harmful to minors. And as others had said, because we are for science, if we're really, really for what real science is, the frontal cortex is not developed, they cannot, they do not have the sense to really make decisions on a lot of things, but they can be aroused very easily. Trust me, because I've even talked about Jesus and Mary coming on an ass, and the children, teenagers in class just go wild over one word. So yes, it's per, what do you call it, perulant interest or sexual interest in these books? By far, it is definitely in those books. So anyway, the, the Supreme Court has already given you all a precedent to definitely go through with this, but also I'm not sa, I don't feel safe with the library board of control that we have in place. I've been to several meetings and watched several of the meetings online. I think that there's wolves in sheep's clothing within our, within our library. The director also, she's also said something in December to a, to a reporter, when asked about the pedophilic material, she says, "We do not have materials that make, or we do have materials that make mention of its existence, but we do not own materials with expressed purpose of furthering pedophilia." Duh. Well, come on. That's, that's something that we go to school, and another person was talking about the yearly training that we have to get. We were supposed to watch because they come in, and they're sly, and they try to, they do a lot of things to get the kids over to them. And it's, anyway, we're supposed to say righteousness exalts a nation. I want our St. Tammany Parish to be exalted. It says, but sin condemns any people. I don't want us to be condemned here. We're all supposed to do better. So I hope that you all, with the power that God's given you, and that we, the voters, have given you, please, please protect our children, make our community a better place. Trust me, the crime since 2017 in St. Tammany Parish has almost doubled, for that's crimes against children.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Just to answer the question about the live feed, that's, the parish council doesn't control the feed, that's PIO, and I would ask the administration what's happening with that, but as you can see, they're not here. So, but that's none of us up here that are, I don't have some secret button to push anywhere. I don't control that. Just, whether you believe me or not, but, okay, Kristin, Kristin Seals-Gregory.
Hi, I'm Kristin Seals-Gregory. I'm the mom of two beautiful children. My daughter Liliana is 16. My son Levi, who you met tonight, is 13. I'm not going to talk to you tonight from anything but as a mom. I've talked to hundreds of parents over the last few months, close to a year, about this topic, and we all have the same opinion. This is not okay. People want to get up here and say, there's nothing in the library that our children can't read. Even Mr. Ari, who is my councilman, tried to make the claim that what my son read isn't available to him. Yes, it is. He can walk into any library, pick it up off the shelf and read it. How do you think we got it? I want to talk to you tonight because my former husband, my children's father, as my son told you, passed away protecting our citizens. He died November 17th, when my children were 12 and 8 years old. My son has picked up the mantle that he left in being a protector for our citizens. He feels at 13, this is so passionate to him, knowing that these things are in our library, that he was willing to come tonight and cry because he saw his daddy's name. And this is so passionate for him. They want to say stuff like this isn't in our library. I'm going to read to you some books that are in our young adult section. Our young adult section starts for children who are 13 years old. It says, "Hey, Earl, I'm going to eat her pussy." He says, "Do you even know how to eat pussy?" He says, "Papa Gains." He says, "Papa Gaines never sat you down, but son, one day you're going to have to eat the pussy." No, he didn't teach me, but he taught me how to eat a butthole. That's okay. This is what our librarians are saying is okay for our children. From where I stood, our children are under the age of 18 years old. Another book in our library that currently is behind the counter, but there's talk about putting it back, it's called, this book is gay. This book offers tips on how to give anal sex, hand jobs. It talks about how to use Grindr to meet people in the community who might want to have sex with you. Yes, in my preface, you have to be 18. Then why aren't they doing this for only 18-year-olds? Another book that has been reviewed and is put back on the shelf is This Boys Aren't Blue, Aren't All Blue. It says, "He reached his hand down, pulled out my dick. He quickly went to give me head. I just sat back and enjoyed it as I could tell he was too." I don't know how you take that out of context. This is what they're saying is okay for our children. Mommy is not okay with this. The fact that all of you sit up here and aren't enforcing these laws to protect our children? Guess who's responsible? Don't mistake it, this isn't a ban. This is just simply saying, put these books where our kids cannot reach them, and only 18-year-olds can. Thank you.
Cynthia Weatherly? Cynthia Weatherly?
Cynthia Weatherly of the Beeta Springs. So it's, it's so funny, because as a library supporter, I actually agree with a lot of the book restrictors. Neither side supports this resolution. And I agree with the previous speaker about, how did a 13-year-old child get that book? Well, I did fact-check, because I have the internet, and that is Sheldon, the adult section, and that 13-year-old could not have gotten that book without the parent's permission. He would not have gotten out of the library with it unless he stole it. So his parent gave him that book, and then proceeded to use her child in gross performative display. This is not normal. Every book that she mentioned is for adults, and it's Sheldon, the adult section. But we're going to move on from that. What I'm asking is that you stop wasting taxpayer money. Zero books have been challenged in the prior 38 years. Some of these books that are recently challenged have been in our library system for 50 years, actually, one of them more than 50 years. I also want to know if you're aware that these frivolous book challenges are costing taxpayers over $85,000, and that is a low estimate of how much these complaints by one person in particular are costing taxpayers. As Mr. Ari stated, the library is already in compliance with law Act 436. And what little bit they are not in compliance of, they are working towards. They have until, I think, June of next year. As Mr. Smith stated, these books were already presented to the DA Montgomery here in St. Tammany, and Attorney General Landry, who both agreed that none of the books are obscene, pornographic, and do not break any laws. Libraries are neither left nor right, liberal nor conservative. Librarians are not sexual abusers, groomers, or pedophiles. Neither are library books. I have personally read and heard innumerable threats, accusations to our fellow citizens that they are coming for your children. This is not normal behavior. This is not happening in other parishes. It is high time that this parish council stands up for the dedicated employees of this parish. I don't believe for a second that any of you would allow other parish employees to be treated the way our public library administration and employees have been treated. They have actually harassed teen volunteers in the summer reading program with this crap. It's not normal. It needs to stop.
Thank you. Richard Mahoney?
I'm Rich Mahoney. I have a father. My wife and I are blessed with 11 children and now 37 grandchildren. And parents are the primary educators of their children. And this goes on in many libraries. I'm sorry. Matter of fact, we invoked God's name when we came in here. We invoked our Lord Jesus Christ's name when we came in here. No perversion should be in this library, let alone pornography. Nothing that adult or a child should see. The conjugal act in marriage is so sacred and intimate, it doesn't belong in the library, let alone diabolical sexual disorientation. This is not about diversity. This is about perversity. You invoked our Lord Jesus Christ's name, who calls this an abomination. Says we'd better millstone be hung around your neck and thrown into the bottom of the sea, that you would diabolically sexually disorient or corrupt the innocence of a child. No pornographic material. No. Matter of fact, I, we taught, we homeschooled our children. If we wanted information on nanotechnology, biotechnology, or any other subject, that's what we should find in the library, not diabolical sexual disorientation or perversity. This is not about God even. This is about the natural law. This is about decency. You would go to jail, you would all go to jail if you put pornography in the library when I was a child. Hear the words, remember. You invoked our Lord Jesus Christ. Don't stand before Him with any indecency or pornography in this library.
Kim Turner?
Good evening. My name is Kim Turner. I am a resident of Mandeville, St. Tammany Parish. I have been for eight years. I am a writer, and I have a unique and special perspective on books. Not here to argue that tonight, because it's settled. This is settled law, but this proposal tonight is not. It is just sauce for the goose for us to continue to debate about these things. One of the challenges, there's, there's so much to process with all of this. And what I would like to agree with from both sides is that we are advocating for rights, for parental rights. You have every right to go in there with your child and decide what you do and do not want them to read. Libraries are a complete neutrality. They are a neutral ground. You can go in there for education, you can go in there to understand. We've made the case many times that these books that are for older children or adults save lives. That's also not on the table tonight. What we're discussing is that St. Tammany is number one for book banning in the United States. We, we aren't, we're not distinguishing ourselves in any other way than to say that we have created a separate section for books. 15 people in our community have made a decision for 239,000 people. The book is removed the instant the copy and paste happens. If that's not offensive to you, these people have not read the books. I have a library card. Before you file a challenge for these books, you should have to produce your library card. You should have to show that the book in question has been checked out, but it hasn't. They have a li, they have a laundry list that they go down and they cut and paste, and that's why we're seeing the exact same titles across the United States, but doubly so here in St. Tammany. If you do not want your child to read something, then they should not read it. If you do not want your child to play a violent video game, don't let them. It is, it is incumbent upon you to take the responsibility for your child. As we have noted here many times, many people here tonight, there are many diverse personalities, people, cultures, everyone in this community. And when I pay my taxes at the end of the year, it doesn't make me check a box that says, "Are you paying Christian taxes? Are you paying Jewish taxes? Are you paying atheist taxes?" We just pay taxes. We all pitch in to the same pot so that we can have a neutral ground here that are our libraries, our safe spaces where people go to learn, where our elders go to understand, to continue to work on programs. Our library has been so extraordinary in the middle of all of this fire. They've kept their-
Thank you, ma'am.
Good job!
So we have, we have two cards, but the names aren't filled out on it, and I can't read the signatures, so, last card, Kevin Marino?
Hi, my name is Kevin Marino. I've been a man, a resident of Mandeville since I was four years old. As a kid, and now as an adult, I've always thought highly of our library system. Please vote no on the proposed resolution. There is no need to show support for an existing law. Instead, please move, to bring forward the proposed resolution to support the library. The librarians in St. Tammany need you to show them that you care about them. They feel like you, the parish council, do not support them. And passing the proposed resolution would show you, show them that you do in fact support our library. The library is an embodiment of the First Amendment to the Constitution of the United States of America. The freedom of speech is sacred, and we should fight against any attempts to encroach on that freedom. The Accountability Group wants to burn the library to the ground by defunding it. They do not believe in free speech. On April 5th, the Accountability Page, Facebook Page stated, "No Millage Without Reform." On April 24th, Joanna Minor stated she does not think the Millage will be renewed in 2024. Donna Bennett said on May 19th, "Defund the library. Vote no to the Millage." In June, the Accountability Facebook Page said, "Unless the library meets its demands, the Millage will not be renewed." The poster I have and the flyer that I've given some of you talks about over $72,000 of taxpayer money wasted on these frivolous attacks on our freedom of speech. While I generally think it's good mon, it's money well spent to investigate the concerns of, of citizens, I don't think the Accountability Group is acting in good faith. They have not read the books that they complain about. They fill out the forms incorrectly. Connie hasn't shown up to a single meeting to defend her statements. And tonight, instead of, she claimed she wasn't going to come, and said she, she allegedly attacked someone outside. At the last Library Board of Control meeting, Jake Ari thought he had the wrong book because Connie complained about page 284 in a 40-page children's book. Chairman Ari, you said, "If there was a procedural motion to kick this back, I would be all in favor of that." In many of the statements Connie's and company quotes pages that don't exist and copy and paste junk from some random website. She submitted 37 statements on November 19th, 19 on December 4th, 19 more on December 5th, 27 on December 23rd, and another 35 on the 30th. This is a waste of taxpayer resources? I don't know what else to say, it is. I would like you to do a couple things now or in the near future. First, I'd like you to instruct the Library Board of Control to return the challenge books back to the shelves and stop violating the First Amendment rights of all the citizens of St. Tammany Parish because of one person. Second, I'd like you to instruct the Library Board of Control to reject the incomplete or inaccurate statements and send them back to Connie and have her resubmit them. And lastly, I'd like you to support the resolution to support the library. Thank you.
Teri Taylor-Joseph?
My apologies. I think my card was one of the ones you couldn't read. So sorry for my handwriting. So I am Teri Taylor-Joseph. I am a resident of Covington. I've been in St. Tammany Parish for over 20 years. So I have always been a lover of books. I am that child who would check out books from the library. I attended mostly predominantly white institutions all the way through graduate school. And as such, as we all know, the literary canon from my undergraduate degree, I was an English major. And we all know the literary canon is mostly comprised of dead white men. So part of my time, I would spend in the library looking at books, checking books out of people of color, people that looked like me, people with diverse ideas. That was part of my learning process. And yes, I did learn a lot from the dead white men. Some of them I idolize, Emerson, Thoreau, and such. Another thing too is, when we utilize the library, if, if I landed from Mars, I would swear that there are six-year-olds driving themselves to the library, checking out these books, knowing exactly where these books are with this pornographic information. That doesn't happen. I have two daughters. They were born in St. Tammany Parish. They're 18 and 20 right now. They were brought to the library by me and my husband, and we were there with them. We actually read books together. I was a parent, and you know what? I was a good one, and I still am. And I take control over how I raise my children, and I don't rely on the library to do that, but guess what? I trust the librarians because they have safeguards in place, but I was still bringing them to the library. Another thing too is that if I were to land from Mars, I would swear that LGBT plus people only have interest in sex. You know what? I am a straight ally, and I have friends who are trans. I have friends that are other races than me, other religions than me, and so on. You know what? My LGBT friends, guess what? Some of them like to garden. Maybe they might check out a book on that, right? So we can't sit here and pretend that there are just all of these pornographic books in the library, and people can just run in, drive their, you know, six-year-olds drive to the library and get these books. Let's be real, we need to think about what we say when we mean community standards. Is it just banning everything that is not Christian, not straight, not white? Or can we say our community standards would be love, diversity, knowledge, right? Can we do that? So this, this whole thing is just ridiculous. And I'd ask you to keep that in mind as you vote.
Thank you. Mr. Vincenno? Ask and ye shall receive. I think you wouldn't address that I do not have a button up here that's censoring people.
Yes, so my name is Michael Vincenno. I'm the Director of Public Information for St. Tammany Parish Government. Tonight, we've heard some concerns about our broadcast. We had a live feed tonight. There were three hiccups on it. Only on nights like tonight, we obviously have a regularly scheduled programming, which is various things about St. Tammany Parish. If you watch STPG TV online or on Charter. But on, tonight, whenever the programming rolled over to a new episode, a new show, it reverted back to that instead of the live broadcast. My staff worked quickly to update that and have it go back to live broadcast here, but I want to rest everyone assured that we do have a recorded copy of tonight's meeting, and that will be up tomorrow. So anytime this meeting is played in the future, it'll be a clean copy of everything that happened inside of these chambers tonight. So there were some, some concerns and questions, but I just want to rest everyone assured that tomorrow, up on YouTube, up on our channel as well, the clean feed will be from tonight's meeting. Thank you.
So just to clarify, we had some technical difficulties, and you all worked expeditiously to correct those?
Yes, and we have an option where we can override what's on the channel. For some reason or another, the technology, which can be everyone's worst enemy at some times, the technology didn't work in that case. We'll have a conversation with our providers tomorrow, make sure this doesn't happen again.
Thank you. All right, so that ends the public comment period. Want to ask, do we want com, do we want ours first, or do we want? Well, there's one card that didn't have any information at all filled out on it, so. There's a, there's a card that's completely blank. Yes, come up quickly, please.
So my name is Jonathan Hyman. I am a lifelong resident of Mandeville. I've lived here, well, nearly lifelong, 40 years or so. I want to thank everyone for allowing me to speak and, and everyone else. So I'll try to be as quick as I can. I'm a father of three young children who are in the public schools here. I'm also a pediatrician in the community. I'm against this resolution, but as many people have said tonight, this resolution is unnecessary because Act 40- is unnecessary because Act 436 is already passed into law. So I'm sort of left wondering, why are we debating this? However, I am glad to lend my voice and my opinion, especially hearing a lot of the concerning voices from some of the other people here. So I think that a lot of people will agree that the intent of SB 7 or Act 436 and of this resolution is a thinly veiled attack on books written by and for the LGBTQ community, and in fact, against these individuals. I also think it's an attack on science. I've heard a lot tonight about the Bible, but I'm left asking, what about the separation of church and state? As a pediatrician who works in this community and many others in southeast Louisiana, I can tell you that these children, these LGBTQ youths are already ostracized. Removing books that these children identify with makes this problem worse. These kids need more support, not a manufactured problem that functions to target them and to restrict their freedoms. The rates of mental health illness and depression and suicide is demonstrably higher in LGBTQ youth. Believe me, I see this nearly every day in the clinics that I work in throughout the southern part of this state. The library should provide a safe space for all children. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that ends the public comment period. Mr. Smith?
Okay, usually they let the councilman speak last, but I'm going to go ahead since I've been the punching bag tonight. You know, it's always interesting because there are 260,000 people in the parish, and there are 17,000 people in my district. And most of them really don't know me, or they barely know me, but they're absolutely sure of what my thinking and motives are, and they're not shy about telling me that. So I'm going to tell you what my motives were in sponsoring this. Whether you believe that or not, that's up to you. Okay? My stance has not changed on this subject, this issue, since the day that it was brought forward. And I had several discussions with several of you who were in the audience at one time, and at least one, David Kugel, who happens to be my opponent in the race for councilman, about the library issue. And my stance on it was if there was something that was objectionable, and it was found to be objectionable, and I'll get into that in a minute, it needed to go in another section of the library other than the juvenile section. I have published that. I've put that out there. I have told people. I have spoke on that. My stance on that has not changed. It is my stance today. Okay, so why call this particular meeting? Pretty much, both sides are right. This resolution does not change the law in any way. It doesn't add to the law. It doesn't detract the law in any way. I called it for two main reasons. One, when the juvenile, challenged juvenile material started coming up to the Library Board, I started attending them. Okay? Now, I had two kids. They're grown now. I was a scout leader for eight years. I was active in my church and still am. I've been a teacher for 24 years, ongoing on 24 years. I taught English 1 at one time. I taught American History and American Government at one time. And I teach world history now. By law, if not by nature, I'm supposed to try and protect children. That's my job. I've taken my job seriously every time that I've stepped up to do my job. I'll continue to do that. I did that way before I got into politics and way before there was an election. And I'll continue to do it when my time in public office is over. So rest assured that I'm doing things because of what I think is right, not on the basis strictly of politics. Okay? When I went to the Library Board of Control and listened to several of the challenges, I spoke up for removing them from the juvenile section and placing them in another section of the library. I believe most of them were put back in the juvenile section. Okay? I'm glad to see, and I have seen lots of people here with the trust of librarians. I'm a big supporter of the library since I was a kid. Okay? Librarians have been very helpful to me over the years. They've helped me an enormous amount. Okay? But it surprised me that the Library Board of Control, in some cases, overruled the librarians, who many people here have said, the librarians know their patrons better than anybody. They know the materials better than anyone. Yet, at least in one case, at one of the meetings, and maybe in two, I can't remember exactly, but I know in one case, the board of librarians reviewing the books told the Library Board of Control they believed that it needed to be out of the juvenile section. In another area of the library where it could be accessed with the parents' permission, okay, they overruled them. Okay? So I started to think about doing a resolution. Okay, that was in May. It took a while to get it done. I knew that Act 436 was probably going to be signed into law. Okay? That was the bill that the legislature preferred. Okay? House Bill 20, David's bill, didn't get out of the committee. Okay? I didn't go oppose it. The people on the committee opposed it. They didn't think that the law was a good law. They preferred the one that was in the Senate. Okay? So the Senate bill passed. Okay? So now we have something that has a little more teeth in it and gives people a little bit more direction. So I sponsored the resolution so that the council could express a will and intent that the law be applied, and that we are watching to see that the law is applied. And we want to hear back from the library when the law is supposed to take effect, by January 1, 2024. That's the first thing. Second thing was, people on all sides of this have been complaining that the council didn't hear them out, or that they hadn't had a public session on this. Now, they've had Library Board of Control meetings. They've had special meetings on this, but still, they wanted to go before the council. So much so that Donna Benoit and Mrs. Bruning tried to insert into an agenda that we had nothing on the agenda to discuss the library, but they thought it was important enough, knowing that they were not supposed to speak, they tried to speak anyway, and they were turned away. I sat very patiently and listened to Donna Benoit. Okay? She was led away. The meeting went on. We had a two-and-a-half-hour meeting. Ms. Bruning came up to speak. She was turned away. Her mic was cut off. The chairman put us in recess. We went into adjournment. I had been sitting here for two-and-a-half hours drinking water. I got up to go to the bathroom. Okay? I came back. She was gone. I have explained that to her, at least on one occasion, face to face. So the second part of this is so you, Donna Benoit, and you, Mrs. Bruning, and everyone over here, and everyone over here, can come in in front of the council and air their grievances and views on this. So yes, this was partially to allow people to do their public commentary. So that's the two reasons that this thing was brought up. Okay? And I hope that the resolution passes, but at least you've had your five minutes, or three minutes, or however long it is that you got to speak in front of the council. Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, for those of you who know me on the council, I have a tendency not to get too emotionally involved in things. Probably some of my education does that, being technical and such. So I look at this from, I'm trying to be non-emotional about it, but I can see how it is emotional for both sides. This is my point. I personally don't even belong, I don't even think we should even have this resolution at this time. I just don't believe that. I just don't see the purpose of it when we already have an act by the state that has 436 inactive. I talked to Senator Heather Cloud's office a couple of weeks ago. And in response to that, you know, I wish we could be more bipartisan between each other in the public. You have a Republican senator write a bill, Senate Bill 7, and it was signed by a Democratic governor. I mean, we all keep talking about bipartisism and stuff. Why can't we be bipartisism with almost everything then? I mean, that's what confuses me. And again, I don't get generally emotionally involved, but now I feel like I'm getting more emotionally involved just talking about this. So, you know, I have three beautiful children. Don't want my three children to go anyplace and see nudity if they were five or six, seven years old. Of course not. I mean, that's a plain fact. But let's look at the reality of what's happening today. Not 40 years ago, not 100 years ago, but today. There are diversified lifestyles. That's a fact. And I deal with facts. That's just the way I am, okay? So lesbian, bi, gay, LGBTQ, R, S, T, U, V, I don't care. I don't care. You know, live your life the way you want to live your life. It doesn't have to influence another one, so you don't have to push what you believe on another person, and yet you don't have to push what you don't believe in another person. So this is going to be the first time I ever get emotionally involved about this, but Mike, to be honest, I wish you would drop this thing because I just don't see a purpose of it at all. And if you don't drop it, I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
I've heard this council been browbeat over not getting involved with the Library Board and the different situations that have been going on. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but at some point, we were told that by council that we, as a council, cannot tell a board how to vote on certain issues. If there's anybody out there that thinks that we've been complacent, don't care, what was the words, turned our backs, you don't know what these people and us, all of us, these council people among ourselves have agonized, talked, read books, discussed what is it that we can do. And the best thing that we could do was to come up with some rules and regulations that would protect the children. First of all, I'd like to say that my life has been in service to St. Tammany Parish. I've been teaching, still teaching, about 49 years, as I'm still teaching. I've been on this council in some way or form, planning and zoning. I've been working for this parish for about 39 years. With my educational background and Christian background, I've been a Christian since I was eight. I am a reporter. That's what they now call, but we have always protected children. There's two other teachers on this board that it is our duty and obligation to report if we think a child is neglected or abused. Excuse me, there's four on there. By law, we have to do that, and we have to make sure that they are protected. But what we also have to make sure is that the parents have that control and that right to protect them. As a Christian, I prayed about all my decisions concerning children and this parish. Serving the parish has been an honor, but it's been very difficult. There are guidelines in teaching profession and parish and state government. We may not agree with some of these, but they're put in place for the best of the people, and in these cases, the children. I've researched the library procedure and process for many hours. I've looked at these books, I've chosen, that have been chosen to put in the library and found out how they got there. I feel St. Tammany Parish library system has implemented to the best of their ability to serve all citizens of St. Tammany Parish. I keep hearing policy instead of politics. I've heard from some of my constituents about certain books. There seems to be two concerns, the gender books and the pornography books. In my research, I've found that the publisher is where this starts. But I've also found out, part of laws, once they're published and they're put into print, that's where it becomes part of our First Amendment. That if they are put aside, or whatever you want to call it, it can be a form of breaking our freedom of speech, if it's in print. The St. Tammany Library has spent a very small percentage of their budget on these types of books, and in a perfect world, it'd be zero. In a perfect world, I would not have to report sexual abuse or abuse of a child. I feel this is a wake-up call to our whole nation. Parents, you're to bring up your children in the way of the Lord. Teach them what they can do when they are confronted with these difficult and confusing things in the world. Lead not on our understanding, but Jesus said, "This is the way, the truth, and the light. Judge not, lest ye be judged." And to love one another as you would be loved, as Jesus loved us. And that's been what I have lived by, worked for, and I will always work for. This council has done the same thing on both sides. I hope tonight, with whatever we decide to do, that we can look forward to no more emails. And Donna, I wish you had been able to call me personally since we used to teach together years ago. I would have loved a conversation with you on some of these things, but you chose to use the Facebook and that sort of thing. I have to believe I'm doing something right because I'm the only one up here that's going in unopposed. Thank you.
Mr. Tal Donno?
Thank you very much. I begin with the general supposition that everybody in this room loves children. Everybody in this room loves St. Tammany Parish. And I believe that everybody in this room believes that there should be certain protections for children as it relates to inappropriate material and the like. As a lawyer, I read Act 436, and I say to myself, well, wait a second. We're bound by that law. This becomes the law of the land. So what are we doing in this resolution? And then I realize what happens when these issues become so front and center. We have tonight, while we're sitting in this room, a deplorable scene out on the road or in the street somewhere where two people opposite poles on this issue get in some sort of fisticuffs. Now, if we are so crazy in St. Tammany Parish that we cannot control ourselves and act civil and have civil debate, and I've said this a couple of times in the past, there's a difference between the fact that maybe Mr. Davis and I disagree and one of us making a personal attack. And I've seen that in this case, and quite frankly, I'm damn tired of it. Pardon my French. For people to get out there and literally fight with each other because of this is crazy. And another thing, and let it be well-known, win, lose, or draw. Some of the threats that I have seen on social media, I'm tired of them. And you know what? All these ladies and gentlemen up here, they don't deserve threats. Mike Smith, he's been through hell and back on this. He doesn't deserve to be threatened. He doesn't deserve to be called the garbage of this parish. He shouldn't be told those things because maybe someone differs with him and differs from him. But I've seen people, including people sitting in this room right now, who have threatened people. And I'm not a good person to threaten, and I don't think most of these people up here. And somebody needs to say that. Because what happens is, the minute you threaten someone, you lose all of your integrity and you lose all of your ability to make your point. You become, in my mind, a jackass. Let it be well-known. So if you want to make a point with me, I stopped at a lady's house- So if you want to make a point with me, I stopped at a lady's house, and that's that lady right there. She was knocking on doors, and by the way, she gave me a bottle of water. But here's what she did. In a polite, civil, and intelligent fashion, she told me what her position was. And you know what? She was very articulate about it. She didn't threaten me. She didn't threaten anybody around me. She didn't tell me I was an idiot. As a practical matter, she probably didn't know how I felt about this in the beginning. But she was courteous and professional. And some of the people in this room right now have had some of the most ugly threats to people up here in this day as, they ought to be ashamed of themselves. And they don't belong in this room, and they don't belong in our parish, if that's the way they're going to practice. Now, as a practical matter, I think Mr. Davis said something that is very appropriate. What are we doing here? And I want to support my friend, Mike Smith, but I cannot compromise myself in terms of as a lawyer and as a person. So I ask myself, when you leave, if this resolution does not pass, what has changed? And the answer to anybody who can read English, they'll say, "Nothing's changed," because Act 436 is still the rule of the day. So what in the, I probably should have, but what in the heck shall we say? Why are we doing this? You know why we're doing this? Because of the threats some people have made around to people around here. And that's the worst way to get my attention and the worst way to get these people's attention. So this gentleman here, who's about as good faith of a councilman as we have up here, Mike Smith, he's very diligent. I've watched him look at many issues. He does his best work to help people, represent people, and do what's fair. And you've treated him like a piece of dirt, some of y'all have. And God bless you for doing that. So what I'm saying to you is, I'm going to join this gentleman, and I bet you some others up here, and say, "I'm going to vote against this resolution, and I feel bad about it from the standpoint that I feel like in a way I'm not supporting Mike Smith." But what I'm, the reason why I'm voting against it, because I am not going to be a person who can be intimidated, who could be threatened, who could be told that I'm an idiot, who could be saying, "Well, I'm not at the meeting tonight because I'm out here trying to get you unelected." And you know what I say to them? To hell with whether I get elected or not, I'm going to try to always do what's right and represent people. And to back up Mike Smith, I believe in this case, quite honestly, is to vote against the resolution. Because people in this parish need to understand, and I might have exceeded my time with apology, but we need to understand in this parish that there's a difference between civil debate and threats and intimidation. I respect the people like that very nice lady over there, who made a very good argument in the favor of the position that she set forth here tonight. She did it the right way. But damn it to hell, the people in this room who think they can intimidate people, they don't belong here, they don't belong anywhere. So in all due respect, my position is made known, but my position, in my mind, is really supporting Mike Smith, because Mike Smith doesn't deserve what the heck he got. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tell me how you feel.
Wait, did I make it? You want me to repeat myself?
No, no, that's fine. Thank you, Rockin. You know, every one of us up here have an opinion on this. Everyone. But you know what's really interesting? When I look out here, there's two sides. But I want one person from either side, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, to come up and tell me, "Why are you absolutely right and that other person is absolutely wrong?" Come on up, ma'am.
Mr. Loreno, I get to chair the meeting.
I'm sorry.
Luckily, so we've already had our public comment period, so I'm not going to allow any more public comment.
I don't, Ronnie, but thank you for coming up. And you can tell me in a little, ma'am?
At the beginning of the second file, she told the people that her paperwork had to be booked in the envelope, or she had been concerned with sexual harassment.
Ma'am, we're not having any more public comment.
Thank you, ma'am. Everybody has the right to have their opinion. It's on every issue we have out here today, not just up here. You go buy a car, you have an opinion. Why can't we sit down together and figure this thing out? That's what I hope comes out of this meeting. But when I walked in the door, I had one thing on top of my list, and by golly, if it didn't happen on the first speaker, I had parental control. Parental control. And what happens right out the hat? A wonderful family comes up and demonstrates parental control. But you may not like the way it was presented, but it made my point. They chose to allow their child to read the book and to make the statements. That is their God-given right. They can do whatever they want to do with their child. They did it. And if somebody doesn't want to read that book, they do just the same thing. They don't give it to them. So it is parental control. If it's not, there's a big problem. Number two, as somebody, number three, as somebody has said, "This is already state law." It is. But can it be changed and can it be modified and made a little bit better? Absolutely yes. And that's what should come out of this meeting. That's what should come out of this meeting. We should sit here right now and say, "There's two sides to this issue, and how do we work together to get this done for the kids?" That's what should happen. It's so funny, I sat here and listened to people come up to that mic and say, "This is a political issue. Mr. Smith, you are doing a political thing." Well, by golly, does that same thing apply, a political issue, when you tell someone, "If you don't do it, I'm not voting for you"? Is that a political issue? Do you use it both ways? You know the answer's yes. Attorney General's opinion. Is an Attorney General's opinion binding? Is it binding? No. No. The answer's no. You know how many Attorney General opinions I've seen in the past eight years? But they're not binding. So don't hang it up there and say, "The Attorney General did this, and this is what you have to do." If you want to use it, put the little adjective in front of it. It's not binding. But you conveniently forget that. Mr. Taladano said something a minute ago, and this is the last thing I'm going to say because it is unbelievable. There's a fight outside. Think this place has any cameras? Do you? You're right. And guess who you're going to see? Guess who you're going to see? You all figure it out. I don't know, but you all figure it out. So the bottom line is, I want to protect the children. I think we need to put the, not ban books, we need to put the books in the safe spots so kids cannot get them unless a parent wants them to read it. I've been that way from the very beginning. Very beginning. Because I have kids and grandkids, and I want great-grandkids, like somebody else said out there a minute ago. But I want them to have their American freedom and be able to do what you and I have done for our years here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Bryan.
Well, there's a lot of comments that have been made about banning books. I have to tell you, when I hear from people in my district, I'm not hearing a desire to ban anything. The only request I have heard is that objectionable material, which at this point would be something that rises to what Act 436 provides, the information about that, that that material would be in a reserve area. That's the only thing I've ever heard, barring one person. I do have to say that. I have never heard anybody make derogatory statements about what adults want to do with their time, how they live their lives, or that they want to control adults. What I see is concerned parents, and look, I'm a mother, I'm a grandmother, and I'm a teacher. I'm one of the reporters. If we see a problem, we have to report it. That's the law. We live our lives that way forever. We don't change. Okay? There's something that you have to consider with kids, too. It's not just age, it's maturity level that has to be considered. I think most people that have spoken to me, and it's been quite a few, are wanting to have a situation where it was like the old days. If you remember Blockbuster Video, now, some of us remember that, some of y'all are probably too young. But back in the old days, when you'd rent videos, I'd go with my kids, and I remember seeing a side room. I never went in there because we were getting Disney movies and G-movies for my children, okay? But that side room had videos that were rated R, X, whatever. Now, that was not something we were interested in, but that was available to people who wanted to check that out. They weren't denied getting that, but it was not in front of kids where they'd see the graphic pictures for those videos. So again, I want to let people understand, at least in my district and most of the people I talk to, the vast majority of people I talk to, with the exception of one in my district and maybe a couple of them outside my district. It's just about making sure that kids don't have access to something that the parents feel would be objectionable. Now, somebody stated that parents have to monitor their kids. Obviously, that's true. A child is not going to drive themselves to the library unless they have a driver's license. But you have to have adults with children up to age ten or eleven. Older than that, they have freedom to rein in the library. And I think what I see is people just wanting to protect children. And everybody wants to respect everybody's rights. I have never heard of anybody wanting to deny anybody's freedom of speech, anybody's First Amendment rights, any rights of any kind. They just want to protect kids. And that's not a bad thing. There is a library court system that allows parents to decide what children have access to, and that's a good thing. I hope that there's some positive things that come out of this. I'm telling you, I know I've talked to Mr. Smith for a while, there were so many people wanting to speak to us, even though we were told by lawyers that we had no control of what the board was doing. And I'm going to tell you another thing. We've had issues with rec. district boards and fire. district boards. We don't control the boards. Okay? But we had a lot of people who really sincerely wanted to speak before us. And I think that's a big part of tonight's meeting, was to give you the opportunity to be heard. And I think that's very important for a lot of people. And I hope you feel better that you have been heard. And we're trying to be respectful of both sides because we represent both sides. But I'm going to tell you, for me, in my district, I do see people wanting to have a reserve area. And quite honestly, Ms. LaRocca, at the end of the year, last year, was talking about a reserve area. And we've had some librarians recommend that, I think the last book that was challenged, be placed in a reserve area. That was the librarian's recommendation. So again, we want to be respectful of everybody. I hope we have some healing in this community. Again, this is just about putting things that rise up to the law in a reserve area. That's all.
That's a violation of our personal rights. No more comments, please. Are you finished, Ms. Bryan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Thanks for everyone coming out tonight. This is an issue that we've all battled. My position on this issue has been the same from the beginning of the issue. We have tried to work subtly to get this operation under control. That has not worked up to this point. We'll admit that. So I think we did get some assistance with the bill. Now we have something of substance to measure actions against. But my position has always been pretty simple. As you said, Mr. Loreno, parental guidance and age appropriateness. This doesn't encompass any political view. It doesn't encompass any, oh, shall we say, acquisition of gender or sexual identity or lifestyle or however you want to live your life. It's just a matter of children. There's something that's age appropriate for kids, and I don't care if, what vein of living your life you're in. I think it's universally understood that children can't make a lot of good decisions about complex issues. I haven't asked a ten- or eleven-year-old lately what we should do in the Ukrainian war arena. I haven't asked a ten- or eleven-year-old child, "Could you give me a little marriage counseling?" There are some things that transcend a child's understanding. Well, who makes that decision about when a kid is ready to understand something as complex as human sexuality? Well, Ms. Loreno, the parents do.
Yes, sir.
The parents do. I, we've had a set of twins, Lucy and I, they're adults now, and our policy was kind of, "Well, when they're old enough to ask a question that's meaningful, then we'll give them a meaningful answer." But that should be our decision. Can a child stumble across something at an early age that he has no concept of that might in some way influence him? Yeah, I think so. If somebody puts something in a restricted area, we're not banning anything. And the guy that keeps on shouting about the First Amendment, read the Constitution. Look, 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 look. You can put some, you can put something, is Hustler banned because you have to be eighteen years old to get one from behind the counter?
You can't put a literary book behind a counter.
Sorry. Yeah, sorry. This is an argument about First Amendment rights. Well, that's your opinion. It's an, it's an, it's an argument about age appropriateness, parental guidance, and the ability of just raising your own kid and determining when they're ready to face complex issues. That's it. It, it's, it's not about politics. It's about when a child is ready to understand complexity. Who makes that call? Well, the parents do, or should, in my opinion. That's it. The meeting tonight, yes, fine, we have a law now, and this resolution has no bearing on it, but in my opinion, gave everybody an opportunity to say what was on their mind, and I think that was productive. But I see no, I see no harm done inhabiting a restricted area, and I, and I don't see how that's banning books or censoring anything. And if you want a Gender Queer, a copy of Gender Queer, then buy a case of them from Amazon. Fine. Nothing's banned.
All right. Are you finished, Mr. Fitzgerald?
Done. Thank you.
I, I've, I've read this resolution several times, and the same thoughts crossed my mind, and I'm not going to repeat what everybody said up here on the council, okay? However, just a few things. Number one, I thank the, I thank the state legislature for agreeing, and in this case, the governor for signing Act 436. It got us further along than we were. Now, let's also be clear about certain facts. The state library system, which all of this now is a byproduct of, was created many, many, many years ago, before most all of us in this room were born. And the laws that handle our library boards of control are state laws. They created a five-year term. We didn't create that. The former police jury didn't create that. I personally, but this is what I think Mr. Fitzgerald or Mr. Reno said, there's still a little bit where we can move forward, working with our state legislature. Because, look, I just thanked them, right? Here's the thing. Because it's the body that can only make these changes, we might want to say it. The state Supreme Court here in Louisiana ruled who and where we would get our attorneys. Mr. Fitzgerald asked a question a month and a half ago, and he got a response. And a few of us on the council who had interest, and I was one of them as well, got copies of it. And that response was, and I'm going to tell you something, I want to say this about the attorney, so that y'all don't get this wrong. It was an excellent legal response, if you read it and you, and you thought about exactly what it says and how that you got to this conclusion. And his question was, could we abolish the library board of control? And this is, attorneys that the state Supreme Court told us, you will use good attorney. Gave all the reasons you cannot. Because only one member of this council can serve ex officio. That's the chairman or an employee. Ex officio. And the response was, if you abolished it, we would then be over the library. And by state law, you can't be. Am I right, Mr. Fitzgerald? That, that was the opinion. Now, it's an opinion, like Mr. Reno said. But these things can be progress, perhaps, for this next legislative term. Whereas all of my colleagues said these things, we don't need fights, we don't need ugliness in all of this, okay? Got a lot of religious people here in the audience. I, I see them. One of the first things we learn is, we, we're all children of God. We're all born in the image and likeness of God. I have many people that I know that happen to be gay. Some of them, and I'm pretty conservative, are more conservative than me. They're not pushing anything down my throat, my children's throat. My wife and I raised, had all eight of our children born and raised in Slidell at SMH. We went with our children to the libraries. And that was at a time when it was safer for your kid to walk into the library. But it was safer back then to walk into a movie theater. It was safer back then to watch Channel 4, 6, or 8 on TV, instead of having to watch the Garden Channel and the Discovery Channel, because the words that are said on those channels, we didn't want our children to hear. The lady back here was bold enough to come up and say those words, you know, sexual words, and I respect you, ma'am, for having the willpower to say those things, okay? This legislature said, in this new law, that those words, and they listed every one of them, every one of them that I could ever imagine, any of those words, textually or graphically, requires the library board of control to put it in the adult section. Mentioned reserved. We've, we've all talked about this together up here. That could be a next step. Not banning, not censorship, but perhaps a parental section, an 18 and above section. But we can work together, instead of burning each other at the stakes. I think this has been a good meeting. Let me say one thing, too. Not going to go into the need or not need for the resolution, but I think something's been missed. This resolution, and we have a member of the library board of control here, by the way, I, I'm not in any way going to single out any member of the library board of control, okay? This resolution is to, not you, not the legislature, not me. It says, "Resolution to the St. Tammany Parish Library Board of Control in Support of Act Someone asked early on, I wonder if any of y'all even read Act 436. But I can tell you this, I can only speak for myself, and Ms. Gina knows this, I read it, and I counted the days that the governor had to either sign it or veto it. Am I right, Ms. Gina? Because I wanted it signed. The good path forward without censorship or banning. It was about some reasonable, reasonable controls. And it says it, and it names every word possible. This is to, who many of y'all have written to us, that don't like the way things are going, about the library board of control. Y'all know it. Well, this statement is to the library board of control. It's the one positive thing about this, because we read it, but by golly, the council supports this. We're saying to the library board of control, we want to make absolutely certain that you understand that we support Act 436. That's all I need, is that first sentence. I don't need to read anything else. Because let me tell you one thing, for anybody who hasn't read it in detail, that law gave this parish council, who's also called the governing authority, that if the library board of control did not follow what must be in the adult section, not maybe, must be, bad language words, sexual words, not only graphics, must be, this governing authority can take away their funding. We could never do that before. You can't take away dedicated funding. Not us, we are not God. But, so, so here's the thing. Follow this, and we move forward better. It's a good starting point with a couple of modifications. I'd like to see a four-year term. I'd like to see staggered terms, which we have on some bodies that we appoint, okay? But we have to thank the state legislature for giving us this, and the governor for signing it. You know, that's not politics. That was Republicans and Democrats that, that voted for this in the state legislature, and as someone said, a Democratic governor. So I'm going to stop there, Mr. Chairman, but we can move forward with this. But to the library board of control, I'm going to vote for, because I want to emphasize, you need to follow the law. That's what this is about. Thank you.
Is it Mr. Davis in the queue again?
Yeah, one last, one last. One last statement on this, now that I've emotionally calmed down. Ah, and if that's what you call that. But anyway, I am for Act 8, 434, just like Mr. Binder is as well. But what I'm not for is, we don't have to make a resolution to inform the library board about a law that's been passed. That's the reason I would vote no. It just doesn't make sense to me. And I try to make things logical as I can, and maybe you guys can't accept that, but that's why I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I want to make a quick response. Let me be very clear. All of us up here respect our yes and no votes that occur at every meeting. And we walk out of here as friends and wish each other well, our families well. These people, we get sick. We pray for one another. We pray for their children. Okay? We're not enemies with one another. So what I'm going to say is, is this. Mr. Davis and I, I respect them, we just respectfully disagree. I want to make it clear to the library board of control with my yes vote, but I accept the no votes. We're watching. Don't think about June, June of 2024. You think about what exactly y'all are doing right now. It's in the documents. They're ready to go October 1st, not January 1st. So my yes vote is simply an acknowledgement to them. I know I'm watching, and we're going to hold you accountable to follow the law. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
I'd like to call a question.
Well, I wanted to give a couple of comments since I'm on the library board, if that's acceptable to you, before we, before we do that.
I defer to the chairman. Okay? Sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I'm going to be very, very brief. I've sat at the library board meetings because frankly, the library hadn't really been controversial at all, to the point that we actually weren't even appointing the members the way that we were supposed to in the law, because nobody had ever really looked at it before. So that's how I ended up on the library board, when we realized that it had to be a parish councilperson as the parish president's appointee, unless nobody wanted to do it. But with the things that were going on, I decided to, to step up and be on the board, and we were able to get the Graphic Novel Resolution passed the first meeting I was at. And I think that that took off of the shelves and put in a reserve section, I would say probably 98% of the books that most people would look at, and most people are saying there's pornography or graphic, graphic images on the library, in the library. That's already been done. What we're left with now are basically two categories of books. One are, are kids' books, but when I show them the people, they say, no, that's not the book that I'm talking about. And I'm like, well, this is about 30 of these books, and they're about the exact same, so this is what is being challenged. And people say, well, that's not the one I'm talking about. I'm talking about those ones with those graphic pictures in it. So, okay, well, those have already been behind the shelf. Which ones are you talking about now? And, and no one can really answer me. But I'm the one that's having to read all these books and look at all these challenges, some of which aren't accurate, and I don't even know what books they're even about, so I can't even go about doing what I'm supposed to be doing. But, you know, so, so I feel like when people say the parish council hasn't spent any time on it, you know, that this, that isn't what we're supposed to be doing as far as the council has a member on that board. And I stepped into it, and let me tell you, I've told the council members, and I call them, and I text them, and I take their calls, because I'm the one that hasn't been tortured by the four-and-a-half-hour and five-hour library board meetings, because this has actually been a light meeting. I thought we were going to be here till 2:00 in the morning, from some of the other ones that I've been at. And I, then they all know what's going on, and I bring the books to them, and I show the books to them. And, and at certain point, some of these books that, that, especially the one that was read tonight by, by the 13-year-old at the beginning of the meeting, I mean, I think that's where the, where the problem gets in, because some of these books, that book was about a 300-page book, I think, and yeah, you can pick out probably 20 lines of it and say, oh, that's a, that's a horrible book, but it's not, it's within the context of the book where it is, and it's in the adult section. And I know if people say, well, well, it's in adult section, the kid can go get it. Well, if the, if, I have two kids, 18 and 16, and if I told them not to go somewhere, and they wouldn't do it, or if they did, they would get in trouble for it. So I don't know if, if you're telling your kid, hey, don't go into the adult section of the library, because guess what are going to be in that, that section? I mean, I know this is hard for everybody to comprehend. Books written for adults by the name, that's what it is. So I, I don't think that we can take every single book that has any sort of either sexual content, or, I mean, what's a book about Hiroshima that shows burned naked bodies? What about the Meili massacre? I mean, what about murder mystery books that talk about that? I mean, there's, the reason it's called the adult section is because that's what the content is geared toward. So I, I don't, I think that what we've done so far is we've taken out the books that most people would look at and say, yeah, that's a, that's a pretty, that, that one or two or three pages of it is pretty offensive. Let's put that in the off chance that a kid grabs that and looks at it. But some of these books that are 200 and 300 pages are just text. One of the books has been on the shelf, we think, since 1970. And when I talked with Paul Hollis about that and said that book was challenged, he remembered it from his English literature class and couldn't believe that that was being challenged. It's a Blue S I, which we've already talked about. The NAACP, the Southwest Regional Director came in and said, why on earth are you looking at, at taking this book and, and either putting it in a restricted section, or, and contrary to what my colleagues are saying, I read the challenges, about a third of the challenges have said, we want the book removed from the library. So I, I, I don't want to say, yeah, okay, that's not banned, but I guess if I told some of you all, hey, I'm removing you tonight and don't ever come back, you wouldn't say I didn't ban you from here. You would, you would, oh, he just removed me, and I can't come back. You would say, I got banned. So that is what some of the challenges are, and I'm the one that has to read them and look at them. So that is what is going on. And maybe your people don't want that, but that is what is being put before the library board on a, on a, a meeting-by-meeting basis. There's at least one of those that say, this shouldn't be in the library anywhere. So, so I, I think that, you know, in some ways, to me, and I let people go on, I let you go off the topic, you know, I apologize to some of my colleagues, apologize to Mr. Smith, I probably should have reined people in a little bit more, but I wanted everybody to have an opportunity to, to vent your frustrations on both sides, because now nobody's happy. So, you know, maybe, maybe we've done our job, I don't know. But, you know, at the end of the day, what, to, to bring this back to what we were really talking about, which is a very limited issue, there is a lot of, from the standpoint of the parish council. We deal with roads, drainage, 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 development, 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 and the most overarching thing is the budget, which, as I said, we have a $20 million hole that's coming up in six weeks that we're trying to figure out. So that, that is really the focus of this is, on these types of issues, on a state body, a state-created board, that the people of this parish voted back in the 80s to opt into that system, by referendum, you voted, this is the system you wanted, so there wasn't really any council oversight over it. It has been a very difficult decision to try to figure out what we can do to, to try to address people's concerns while also doing what we can do legally. Because obviously, even though some people have said, we'll just go do it and worry about it later, you know, that's generally, I'm a lawyer, too, that's generally not a good strategy. And, you know, some of the comments about, we'll just do what Jefferson does, I mean, read Jefferson Parish's charter. Lot different than us. We don't even have the right to tell anybody other than our council staff what to do. We can't tell a guy out clearing a ditch what to do. We can't tell any of those people what to do. We can ask them questions, but we can't tell them what to do. Yet, we're going to suddenly somehow run a library? I mean, that's just not, 130 employees with a $12 million budget? That's just not practical. We're going to go up here and read the books? Because you have to read, the case law says you have to read the book as a whole, the work taken as a whole. So all of us are going to be reading 400 and 500-page books and making a decision on that? Or do you want us focusing on trying to figure out what FEMA is doing to your flood insurance rates? Do you want us figuring out what drainage is? Do you want us figuring out what development is? So I get it, we can multitask. We can do all that. But to act like this is some easy question or to punt it with us, with everything that's been done and that's still not enough, I don't know if you're ever going to make a lot of people happy, because some of the books in the library, people are just going to have a disagreement over it. But that seems to me that's sort of the purpose of a public library. And some of these books that I keep hearing, the kids, the kids, the kids, you know, there's going to be books in the adult section that aren't appropriate for your kids. And if you can't keep your kids out of it, I don't know what to tell you, but that's probably the least of your worries if they are going to go into a public library and do that. So, look, come on, please, please, I'm almost done, and we want to get out of here. I will, so to bring this back to this resolution, one of the things that this resolution does say, and it's weird because I'm on the board, so I'm telling myself what to do, I guess. But it does say that the acts that, New Orleans for you, asks that the library board of control enact these policies and put them into effect, you know, basically as soon as practical, no later than January 1st, 2024. The act actually gives until, I think, June 1st, 2024. So it is, so from that standpoint, it is saying, look, let's get this, and let's get it done a little bit faster. That's our ask to the library board, to myself, I guess, in my particular case. So I think it does go just at least a little bit beyond. I'm sure I could parse it through and find where maybe it's, some of the language may be asking for some policies that are a little bit broader than Act 436 to make them clearer. So with that, Mr. Smith, I'm assuming you want to make a motion?
Yeah, move the question. So you will move to adopt the resolution? You have a second? Second by Mr. Loughlin. All right. Seeing no further discussion, please vote.
Seven yeas, five nays, two absents.
We had to have eight. As everybody says, it takes eight votes to do anything up here. So seeing that there's no further items on the agenda, entertain a motion to, motion by Ms. Tanner, second by Mr. Smith. Thank you.